People like myself who are land use planners, I'm also an architect and urban designer. And we have others in transportation, economic development, public health, arts and culture, and a few other disciplines which put together, you know, wide ranging assistance which we can bring to our communities. So we're happy to be working with Winchester in this effort. So from here, we're basically going to give you a little background on the study introduction. And then really focus on number three and number four in this meeting, which is articulating the community vision for the North Main Street corridor. And then bringing forward this evening, initial recommendations. There are 15 of them, which we're trying to get through this evening. So I'm a little conscious of the timing here. And so if I have any worries about this evening, it's that. So I will be moving a little bit quickly, just trying to make sure that we have enough time to engage. And we also have built into this presentation a lot, I think there's around 18 actually, Zoom polls, which will be inviting your feedback at those recommendations to see how they land with you. Because they are initial at this point, we're trying to get a feel for where the support may be. And then we will be refining those recommendations from this point forward. So the first of those 18 Zoom polls is just to get a little feel for you all, since we just told you some about ourselves. And so let me bring that poll up. And you can see, hopefully, if you haven't used these before, it should be pretty self explanatory. But I'm watching it now, and you should see a pop up on your screen. And it asks, what do you consider your primary relationship to North Main Street? So just a little bit about yourself relative to the study. And the options are you're a resident on Main Street, a resident on an abutting side street, a resident of the area in general, a resident of the town more broadly, a business owner on North Main Street, a property owner on North Main Street, a patron of North Main Street, or a town meeting member, or a town board committee or staff member, or something else that we haven't captured in those options. So I know you only get one choice, but whichever one you identify with the most, I think would be appropriate. So please let us know that. It's like most people, 81% have voted. Give just a couple more seconds for anyone else who would like to get their vote in there. All right, so now I'm going to end that poll and share those results with you so you can see. So it looks like the most are self identify as residents on an abutting side street, followed by a town meeting member, or a town board committee, or staff member. So thank you for that participation. So that's the mechanism by which we'll be getting feedback as we roll through this meeting. So hopefully that was easy enough. Last meeting, the first meeting we had in this process in March, we asked the same question and it was similar results. So we had the highest response was resident on an abutting side street. You can see we had, I think, a few more participants in that meeting. So maybe our numbers will grow as we get rolling here with a few more people joining us. And this is similar to what we provided you at the last meeting. So if you were here at the last one, you would have seen most of this, but we wanted to give the context for those who weren't. So this, this planning process, which we're a part of currently, is a result of the Winchester Master Plan 2030, and was a recommendation from that planning effort, a townwide effort, looking at all aspects of the town, planning for them. And so the goal there that this, this process is a result of was to encourage more commercial mixed use and compact development in areas that support economic vibrancy, including strategic redevelopment parcels in town center and the identified evolving opportunity areas. So North Main Street is an identified evolving opportunity area. You can see some of the detail that was put forward in the Winchester Master Plan regarding creating an area plan for North Main Street. And so this process is the process to do that, to create an area plan for North Main Street that will envision public realm improvements, identify development opportunities, zoning amendments, and design guidelines to help shape the future of development. So that is what is underway. It is an implementation effort really of a planning process which the town has already completed. An award winning planning process, I might add. So kudos to the town for that. And you can see some of the additional details there. Here's a map that was in the master plan about North Main Street and its two components, or the northern portion and the southern portion, and the surrounding and abutting side streets and neighborhoods. The purpose of the study is really covered in those four objectives you see, we're trying to develop a vision for the corridor based upon the community's feedback. We'll be sharing a draft of that vision this evening and getting your feedback on it. We're defining zoning recommendations, the initial set of those recommendations is taking shape as you'll see this evening. And then designing, defining design guidelines, which are also starting to take shape and what we have to share with you this evening. And then looking at ways that all of this can influence public realm improvements for pedestrian safety, additional landscape and streetscape improvements and the like. So our, our study scope and work plan is pretty well aligned with those planning objectives. And we've been working our time and effort in these five various buckets and have at this point put hours into each of those tasks. Here's the, the project schedule which has been laid out and which we've been working toward. We will continue, this is sort of one part of an overall process, a process of which I should say the end goal is to bring zoning modifications to, to a town meeting. And that town meeting may be as soon as the fall, or it may not be depending on in part, your feedback this evening and how your reaction to the initial recommendations looks. But also then just continued conversation with the planning board and the community over the summer about that timing and making sure that everyone feels comfortable with, with proceeding with the set of recommendations that's well supported. So this is, our, our planning study is not the, the terminal, the terminal point of our study is not the terminal point of this process, is what I should say. And that this process will continue with the ultimate goal being those zoning recommendations toward a town meeting in the future. But here we are at our second community meeting. The second community meeting, I should add, of this process, of our planning process, there will be, of course, additional community meetings and public hearings, which would be a part of that larger process to bring more defined zoning recommendations forward. A brief recap of the first community meeting that was back in the end of March. We had 68 in meeting Zoom participants. We put together a poll, that, an online poll and survey that used the same questions and content that people could interact with after the meeting. We had nine participants in that post meeting follow up. So 77 participants in total based upon, that are, will be a part of the results you'll see throughout the presentation this evening. And we've also included in our thinking interviews with 10 stakeholders throughout North Main Street in the town, and are happy, we've been trying to continue to do those focused interviews with stakeholders and have, have had some missed connections occasionally. So we're happy to continue those. And if you'd like to be among that group that get an individual conversation, we'd be happy to connect with you after this meeting. And to do so, it would probably be best to shoot an email to Yolando. You can see his email address on the screen there. We've been speaking with property owners, businesses and tenants, residents, planning board, and are connecting with the historical commission, town or design review committee, and other boards like the transportation committee. So we are focused on the zoning districts along North Main Street, specifically GBD II and GBD III. This study is not looking at the parcels outside of those two districts. So the neighboring parcels, we're not contemplating changes on. So we're focused on those areas. You see 43 parcels in the GBD II, that's the area highlighted in the area along the screen. And a little less, 33 parcels as you move north to the city of Woburn line, there's 33 parcels up there in GBD III. All right, so now let's go ahead and dive right into the initial community vision and get your feedback on it. So we have a vision statement and some goals. And again, here's, here's the background which the community vision and goals are based upon, which I just covered with you all. And among the, among the, the feedback that we received from that group, we asked, what is the most important aspect of North Main Street? And so we, we found that most people thought the support for small businesses and economic activity on North Main Street, followed by a variety of activities that work well together. And then the quality variety of businesses and services, that it's a great place to live and a safe and pleasant place to walk and bike. So you can see those aspects of importance in North Main Street. We also asked, how close is North Main Street compared to what you would like it to be? How close is it today? And the vast majority thought that North Main Street is not very close to what they'd like it to be today. And that it could benefit from substantial changes and improvements. So that's a part of what we're trying to accomplish through these recommendations and the vision. Some additional questions to help us triangulate on the, the appropriate statement. What is missing from North Main Street? Safe walking and biking and more street trees and landscaping with the, the top hits, followed by additional small businesses and services and more housing. And then the last meeting, we went through a series of analyses around the existing conditions in the North Main Street corridor today. And most people thought that the most important one, features of that analysis was the potential for change, which was a combination of many of the analyses that we went through. And if you, if you didn't attend that previous meeting or see a recording of it, you could find that on the town's website, go back and watch that if you're curious. And then we've also been looking at past documents. We've mentioned the, the master plan, but there are other planning documents that focused, have focused in the past on this corridor as well. And what we've come to understand from those past documents is that we're trying to add vitality to the commercial corridor with additional restaurant or retail uses specifically, that a mix of residential uses into the corridor above the ground floor, and specifically affordable units that would count towards the subsidized housing inventory are desirable. Retaining the character of the corridor, preserving key buildings, development patterns is another desirable feature. And approving pedestrian safety and walkability. And then this was some language, some detailed language from that slide I pulled out directly from the master plan that is guiding our effort as well. So looking at a combination of physical improvements along the corridor with less restrictive zoning and development incentives that are looking to have more allowable development intensity, enticing existing property owners to consider redevelopment options and investment. And that ideally the changes would increase housing choice, establish a more robust commercial and jobs base and increase visitation to the area. And that to make this happen, it's likely the master plan positive that zoning changes to allow higher intensity development, parcel consolidation, increased building heights and wider range of uses is likely needed. And that mixed use development with residential should be considered as an approach to meet the current demand for housing in the, in the town, and also to leverage that housing for financial viability in terms of that mixed use development. So it seems like a lot of, a lot of the documents are pointing in the same direction. This was the draft vision statement we tried to put together very succinctly to capture many of those sentiments. And I'll just read it for you all. The North Main Street corridor supports small businesses and economic activity in Winchester. The corridor has a variety of activities and uses that work well together with ground floor shops, restaurants and services, and expanded housing choices with upper level, upper level residential units. North Main Street is, is an attractive and eclectic mix of new and historic buildings that are connected with consistent streetscape and landscape features, including generous shade trees and a network of pocket parks. North Main Street is safe and comfortable for walking, biking and driving. So, so it's, it's pretty straightforward, I think, but I do believe it captures the feedback that we've been hearing from all of those sources which we just covered. And then to make it a little more detailed, we, we would underneath that vision statement, place a few goals, and these are also in the draft form. But we think these goals help to sharpen and make a little more specific the vision statement. So we're looking to leverage new investment to create substantial improvements on North Main Street, strengthen the corridor as a contributor to diversifying the town's tax base, balance new investments so as many stakeholders as possible see positive outcomes, increase the continuity and cohesiveness of North Main Street through building and landscape design, and celebrate the history of North Main Street while embracing the variety and rhythm of variation on the corridor. So we think these make, make the vision statement itself more tangible and more specific. And then the vision statement and these goals would be a part of framing the zoning recommendations and other recommendations that we put forward, which we'll get into in the next section of this presentation. But first, what we wanted to do was just get your reaction to that initial vision statement and the goals. So let me, I'll just skip back to the vision statement so it can be on the screen. And then open up another poll. So you can just let us know how, how this struck you initially. And you can also feel free, if you'd like to put, put a thought in the chat as well. Okay, let me launch this poll. All right, so it has two questions. The first question is, they're both reactions to the material I just showed you, the vision statement and the goals. First, do you feel the draft vision statement is about right for North Main Street? Your options are, yes, it looks good. It's okay, but could be refined. It needs work and is missing key ideas, or no, it's, it's not the right vision in your mind. And then the second is regarding the goals. And then you get the same options. So do you feel the draft goals are about right for North Main Street? And yes, they look good. Or they're okay, but could be refined. Or they need work and are missing key ideas, or no, it's not the right set of goals. So you can see the vision statement still on the screen. I'll, I'll shift to the goals in a moment. I see a question in the chat from John, what is the history of North Main Street? Yeah, so the, the history shows up in a few ways. There are historic structures on North Main Street. The, the history of North Main Street in general terms was that it was a, a factory and mill area with, with mill housing or, or factory housing, a little bit different than some of the other parts of town. And that some of those historic structures are still there. There's the Massachusetts cultural resources inventory has several surveyed properties. I forget the exact number, but there's a substantial amount of historic properties which have been surveyed along the corridor. And so those could be potentially built into and featured in future investment. And, and I think that that question's a fair one, and I think it's also an opportunity to think about what is the narrative of the history of North Main Street? And how could that narrative and story of the history of North Main Street be communicated through these investments and through the public realm? So are there, are there actual stories that could be told through plaques or other components of the built environment? So that, that I think is a great question. All right, so I said I would skip to the other goals. So here are the goals. Looks like we only have about 40% of people who have voted so far. So if you could vote, that would be great. Helps us understand how people are feeling about this draft information. You see the draft goals on the screen. See another question, what, what percentage of residential versus business in the 43 parcels? Hank, I don't believe I'm going to be able to answer that off the cuff. In, in the previous presentation, we did go through a more detailed mapping of the land uses in the North Main Street corridor. And we could share that. I think actually Yolando has shared the link to that YouTube video. So that there, you'd actually see a visual depiction of the land use is as a part of that presentation. I think you may have been present in the last meeting. So I, I will not try to answer that very specifically. I apologize for that in this session. And a question just about the boundaries of North Main Street. Yes, so we're, North Main Street in this case is looking at the, from the intersection with Skilling's Road up to the city of Woburn. That's what the extent of, of the parcels we're looking at. And it includes parcels, basically parcels with frontage on North Main Street, because we're talking about the general business district two and general business district three zoning designations, but it does not include every single parcel of frontage along North Main Street in that area. All right, so I think I've, I've talked long enough and filled enough time that I can close this. We only ended up with 67% of participants voting. So please do try to vote on, in the other opportunities, but I'll share those results for you. And the results that we're seeing for the vision statement, the majority thought that it looked okay, but could be refined and improved. And then 42% said, yes, it looks good. So it looks like we're headed in the right direction. It could be improved and we're, we're happy to either through the chat or if you want to take some time with it and send us an email about how maybe the, how you could see the statement being improved, we'd be happy to take the feedback. And then similarly for the goals, what looks like the goals fared a little bit better. So 50%, the majority said that, yes, they look good. 33% said they are okay, but could be refined. And then 17% said they need work and are missing key ideas. So please do put your thoughts in the chat. If you have some ideas about how, what's missing or how they could be improved, we will definitely take a look at all that information. But in the interest of our, our tight time and how much information I know I want to share this evening, we are going to keep moving along as opposed to having a verbal discussion about it at this moment. So I apologize for if that feels a little abrupt, but I did want to get into this portion of the presentation as well, which is about defining, defining the specific recommendations. And most of these are framed as zoning recommendations with some of them being design standard recommendations as well. There are 15 of them, and I will be going through them in some decent detail this evening. But we will be kind of skipping along the surface a little bit. So I just wanted to get a, an initial set of recommendations out to you all and get your initial reaction to them. You can see the, the breadth and sort of range of topics that are covered in these recommendations. I would cluster them in, in one sort of significant way. And that based upon what we're hearing and heard and what I think is represented in the goals and the vision statement, we're really trying to seek a balance here. And the way I view that balance is around encouraging investment, but also making sure that that investment is aligned with the community's desires and goals. So I think these 15 recommendations do strike that balance. And so the first eight which we'll be going through, I would frame is in that classification of encouraging investment. And then I think that the, the last seven are actually about balancing that encouragement and aligning it, aligning the investment with what the community wants to see and what its ambitions and vision are for North Main Street. So hopefully you'll see how that, that plays out a little bit. We're, we're going to ask you just a little bit of a preview. For each of these recommendations, you'll have a poll pop up quickly and then you can respond to it. If this, you think this is a good idea in terms of its individual recommendation or, or not. And we previewed them all together because I, I do view them a little bit as a set. I think that we definitely as a, a set of initial recommendations have flexibility. We can certainly and will certainly modify based upon your feedback this evening. But I will, I will just give you this caution as, as you think through your response and reaction to the meeting this evening. I don't think it's the case that we can, for example, say, we don't like any of the first eight, which are about encouraging investment. And we, and we like all the second, the, the second set of seven, which are about aligning the investment. I think you need some of each of them. You might not need eight and seven. It might be six and six. It might be five and five. But I think they're all, they're all good ideas and there is a balance that needs to be struck between these two sets. So again, these are applying to the official zoning map of the GBD II and GBD III. That's the intention here. And then there's also the village center overlay district, which does apply mostly to GBD III and GBD II parcels, but it does also include some neighboring residential parcels as well. You can see just, I won't dwell on this, but this is an example from the current zoning table of dimensional regulations about what is required in GBD II and GBD III. And then for the, really the rest of the presentation, I'm going to be using this diagram template to help walk you through illustrative, illustrated, illustrative, illustratively. Still don't think I got that right. Illustratively, there you go, maybe that's better, to show you in diagrams what we're trying to get at in terms of the zoning concepts. And it's a little easier to think about it with a picture than the words. So here you see a typical on the screen, building lot in North Main Street. And this is on the west side of North Main Street. So on average, the west side of North Main Street has a parcel which is 100 feet wide at its frontage on North Main Street and 110 feet deep. So that's what you see there with the building and lot parcel. That's the average size. On the east side of North, North Main Street, it is marginally larger. So you've got 110 feet wide by 120 feet deep, still about the same though. For the purpose of these illustrations, we're going to stick with the west side of North Main Street, that those typical dimensions. Here you see visually the current zoning setbacks which are defined. So you have a 10 foot minimum front setback or a 15 foot maximum front setback in the GBD II. That maximum does not occur in the GBD III. In both, you have a minimum 15 foot rear setback and side setbacks are not required. So that's the existing zoning today. And I just wanted to share with you a, a little bit of an example of, of how a typical redevelopment might occur on those properties. So there, there's always variation, of course, but in my experience, you see mixed use development occur in, in a range of sizes, which is pretty standard. And that range is mostly related to the depth of the building. So that's the 60 to 75 foot dimension that you see that we put on this diagram. So most typically, mixed use development where you have a non residential commercial ground floor that might have a retailer or a shopper, restaurant of some kind with upper story residential uses falls in that range of a 60 to 75 foot building depth. And then the, the width of the building itself would vary based upon the property's constraints. In this case, we're showing the 80 foot width on the property, on that typical property. So that's a pretty standard building size. Also parking comes in very standard building sizes. The buildings, the, the size of a parking lot is mandated by the zoning code in your town. The zoning bylaws, excuse me, and then typically also just as an industry standard, even with variations in parking sizes, the overall dimension of a park, a double loaded parking bay with the two way intersection and travel aisle is 60 feet. So you see that 60 feet shown here. And then on the typical size of a, of a building lot in North Main Street, you see that a typical parking lot and a typical building footprint don't fit. So that's, that's a, a real issue for redevelopment opportunities. And you can see the overlap there that we've marked, and you've got about 22 feet of building which don't overlap. So what does that look like in real life? Here's an example of an overlapping parking in building configuration in Swambskut, where you have parking that needed to fit on the same space effectively as the building footprint. And so you see interesting and inventive ways to make those two things work together where you Interesting and inventive ways to make those two things work together where you pull the building up. But you still have some part of the building which touches the ground, of course, because you have to have vertical circulation, which gets you up into the building. And then you have parking which occurs underneath the building footprint and to the rear of it. So this is this is just kind of the reality of the parcel constraints and geometry here and how redevelopment occurs. And so our initial recommendation. Is to simply allow flexibility for setbacks under specific conditions. And that those conditions would be. Related to the parcel size, related to the development proposal, but it would provide a pathway. For encroachment into those setbacks where it's needed to provide. A necessary building and parking layout. And that would be that would all be through a special permit that that set of allowing this encroachment to happen. So in the previous meeting, we asked more generally, are buildings setback from the street an appropriate distance on North Main Street? And this was the response that we received that. Some people thought they could be smaller. Some people thought they could be larger. Some people thought they were about right, but it wasn't really definitive, the the feedback here in a general sense. So in a more specific sense, we'd like to get your feedback on on that first idea of allowing by special permit. Flexibility to have buildings as necessary. Move into those setbacks as they are currently defined. I'm sorry, I never stopped sharing the results from the previous poll. Try to do that so it gets out of your way. And so here is the. Call for this, and it simply asks. Would you support the recommendation to decrease setbacks under certain circumstances to increase development? Flexibility. Then you get a. Options that, yes, maybe, no, or. The very quick overview, which I just provided you is not enough information. Alright, so thank you for. Responding so quickly in this case. I will try to keep keep these moving along, so I appreciate everyone. Being quick on the button here. So we've got eighty two percent, eighty five percent. That looks pretty good. So I'll close this poll. Share the results real quick. So it looks like fifty nine percent would support this recommendation of allowing that flexibility to occur. To help with that circumstance of it just not not being able to fit in certain circumstances where. Depending on the parcel size, some parcels, of course, are large enough. And some parcels are not. And then we also have. Twenty one percent that say maybe and twenty one percent that say no. So I'll stop sharing that. Okay, so now it's the moving on to the second idea. And this is relative to the same issue. So another solution to that problem would be to allow lot assembly under specific conditions. And so this would increase the flexibility and feasibility for site layout and development by allowing you to combine. A parcel which is to the rear potentially of the parcel which has frontage on North Main Street. In. Most cases, I would say that that other parcel is probably not zoned. In the GBD two or GBD three. So it would be a residentially zoned parcel. And so it's not it's not right in all circumstances. I grant that. But it would it could be right in some circumstances and it could offer. Additional viability for the situation which we're describing to get enough room on a parcel. To place both a surface parking lot and a building footprint that are not overlapping. So that's what we're showing here. So we're adding, in this case, to make our diagram work. We've had to add about fifty seven feet, which would be potentially. Maybe not even the entire portion of an adjacent parcel, but a part of that adjacent parcel. And that gets you your building footprint and your parking area without an overlap. So let's now. See what the reaction is to this second idea. Bring up the poll here for you all. So that it's same same format, and you'll see this format for the rest of the recommendations really. So would you support the recommendation to allow lot assembly? Under specific circumstances to increase redevelopment flexibility? And of course, we'll have to add more detail around what those parameters are, how that review could take place. But just as an initial idea. What we're trying to get a sense for is if if everyone really doesn't like an idea, then then there's not much sense in trying to refine it and get it right. If if it's just going to be an issue. It's like we only have sixty eight percent voting at this point, so please do try to get your. Thoughts in. It's very helpful. We have thirty eight participants in the meeting at this point, so our numbers have grown some. So thank you for everyone who's. Joined us along the way. It's great to have a good amount of audience to get this feedback. So at seventy five percent now, so just another few seconds to give us your feedback. Alright, now end this poll. Share back to you. So forty four percent was the leading answer with, yes, I would support this recommendation, followed by thirty percent at maybe. Nineteen percent at no. And seven percent at needing more information. So it looks like the first two. Ideas have decent support. Now let's. Move on to the next topic. I think this one is relatively to me straightforward, but but I don't think it is. Currently defined in the zoning, and I think it is it's important enough that it really needs to be defined. And that's really the just making very clear the importance of North Main Street frontage that we want. The front and primary facade of a of a building in the future to be. Related to and directly oriented to North Main Street. That we don't want a building which is relating to a side street, for example. We don't want a building. Which is is doing something else and and just need to spell that out very clearly. That we want the building's front to be at the North Main Street frontage. And that also, we want the parking to be behind that building. So there is some language currently in the zoning bylaw today about parking to the rear of the the front plane of the building. And I think that we could strengthen that language. So let me. Pull up the. Poll for this straightforward idea. So would you support the recommendation to define the orientation of the building to North Main Street? And I just realized this this one. In my own classification that I just went over with you all at the very beginning. It got lumped in with the encouraging investment, but I would probably say that this one is about aligning the investment to what we want it to be. It's it's not so much about it. It doesn't cost anything to do this. It's just making clear the intentions and the vision. So seventy percent have voted. Give just another second. To click that button. Alright, that got us a few more percentages, so I'll be happy with that. Let me just share the results to you. So vast majority on this one, which so I'm glad you all agree that this is relative no brainer. That eighty one percent think that, yes, I would support this recommendation fifteen percent maybe, but they need to know more about it. And four percent are no, I would not support this recommendation. Alright. And I am I am not in the meeting. I'm sorry, I'm trying to go through this quickly, so I'm not tracking the comments in the chat, but please do put your comments in the chat and we will we will sort through them after the meeting and get all of your. Ideas and thoughts as we're going through this. So let's just move along. So the next one might not be as straightforward, but but I think it's also important. And that's allowing or requiring side parking access. So in not every case, but in many cases. There are parcels which have both frontage along North Main Street. And access to one of the residential side streets. And I know that that's a sensitive subject. But you can see in the diagram. How much more efficient access from a side street would be than access from the main street frontage. And what happens is you'd impact the building with the access from the frontage. And you'd actually reduce the amount of parking which is achievable. Where you can attach a side access where possible and appropriate. And we can put parameters around where that appropriate location may be. It just makes it work out so much better and makes makes the invitation to investment so much easier. So. I know that this is this is potentially a difficult idea for. Many of you because we saw that the majority of our audience this evening is a resident on a budding side street. So this could potentially be. A direct impact, but you can also see the trade off that occurs when when the access isn't allowed. So let's just see what your reaction is to that. And so would you support this recommendation? Which is our fourth. So far. So would you support the recommendation to allow or require? Side parking access to increase redevelopment efficiency? And so again, we're putting these these all forward as as ideas again to encourage that investment to occur. And it is a balance we understand. And then we would be adding more detail potentially. Around the circumstances which we think this is appropriate. So it looks like seventy one percent have voted. Give just a couple more seconds for people to respond to the poll. Alright, let me share this back with you. So it looks like our our leading response was. Yes, I would support. I'm sorry, I didn't. I should have mentioned this during the the voting, but I broke this into two yeses. So one is a more, the first is a more extreme yes, where you would support requiring side access. Only seventeen percent thought requiring was the right approach. And then the second was a little softer, yes, which is you would allow side access, which was the the more. Frequent response at forty three percent. And then nine percent at maybe. Twenty two percent at no. And two or nine percent at. Need more information. Okay, so let's move on to the next. Topic. And it looks like we're. Trying to gauge my my timing here. I think we what I'm trying to do is get to a point where we have. Some moments at the end for discussion. It looks like we will get there, so. I apologize for this being such a one one way conversation. The next is zoning height as the topic. What you see on the screen is the current zoning requirements around height. So the maximum height is forty five feet. The maximum number of stories is three stories. You can see in the simple diagram, we've divided it across the three floors, and that makes pretty sizable floor to floor heights, fifteen foot floor to floor heights. If you look at that in the context of North Main Street today. It is a larger floor to floor height and a larger overall building envelope. Then you can see with the context, we've we've drawn the surrounding context in this diagram. Pretty close to accurate to some of the buildings that occur. They may be, you know, off by a foot or two, but this is a pretty good representation of that relationship of height. We asked in a previous meeting about the general term and general terms around building height. What is an appropriate height for North Main Street? Most people responded two to three stories. Some more people than others responded three to four stories, and then that was followed by. Four or more stories or one or two stories. So we have a we have a. Initial recommendation here, which I think is is a good one and is encouraging of investment, and I think helps to address the floor to floor height. Concerns. So if you increase the maximum height by stories, but not by feet. And you only make it three in the allowed height, three and a half stories. And a half story. Is defined, we can define it as. A story that is built into the pitch of a roof. So the half the half is effectively that you can't, as it's built into the pitch of the roof. You can't get a fully occupied fourth floor. So it's really a half floor built into the eaves that you're getting in the dormers. But once you do that, and if you maintain the forty five foot height maximum, which is already in existence in the zoning today. You actually shrink together those other floor to floor heights and bring them more in alignment with the context and character of North Main Street today. So I think this is actually in my mind a win win where you both encourage development by offering a little more. Buildable area area and rentable area. And by bringing the overall scale and look and feel of a new building in alignment with the the context of the corridor today. And there you can see the same context at the same heights that we've drawn them previously. With the pitched roof and the the modified floor to floor heights, it does actually feel a little more contextual than it did previously. So your thoughts on this? Initial recommendation number five. Would you support the recommendation to increase the maximum building height to three and a half stories? That increases redevelopment feasibility. Among other things. And I will I will just note in a as a preview, one of our. Design standards that will you'll see in another initial recommendation in a few moments. Is to actually require a pitched roof. A pitched roof is currently not required, so a flat roof can occur at that height today. Which does allow you to get some large floor to floor heights. So seventy five percent have voted. Going to go ahead and end that. Share the results. So really, a lot of the vast majority, seventy two percent said, yes, I would support this recommendation. Sixteen percent are maybe, but they need to know more. Eight percent at no and four percent needing more information. Alright, thank you for that. And then the next is is a topic which is sometimes more complicated than height, but is is related to it. And that's the building density. So the building density is measured in the zoning bylaw today by the floor area ratio FAR, and that's basically dividing the total building area by the total lot area for any lot. And so you can see that calculation here on our diagram. Our diagram shows a total lot area of sixteen thousand seven hundred square feet. Those three floors are fifty six hundred seventy square feet per floor. You've got three of them that equals seventeen thousand ten square feet of building area. And then if you divide that out, you get an FAR, which is that ratio. Of one point zero two. An FAR of one. Is what's allowed in the district today. So this this all works out according. The. Again, in general terms, last meeting, we asked about the appropriate density for North Main Street. Most people thought more density than there is today. Would be appropriate forty nine percent. So if you make that change in the height allowed. It would actually give you. An additional. Half story of. Floor area, which could be counted towards the FAR, and it would bump the FAR up to about a one point. Two or one point one nine to be exact on those calculations in the diagram. So we would suggest. That the FAR, the baseline FAR be increased. To a maximum of one point two zero to be consistent. With this diagram. And I should also note, actually, I don't think I noted. Our diagramming from this point forward is actually using. The modified lot that we showed from the second initial recommendation where we actually have expanded the lot. So that the parking can can coexist without overlapping with the building footprint. So I just wanted to make that note for you all. So let's. Get your feedback on increasing density. So would you support the recommendation to increase maximum density to an FAR of one point two zero? An increase. To increase redevelopment feasibility. Again, we're we're trying to offer. More possibilities, more potential for revenue, more potential for leasable and rentable space or saleable space. And while our, while our diagram is not the only circumstance, of course, that's occurring in the corridor, our diagram is. Uh, using real dimensions and and real calculations. So the the lessons that we're learning from this typical situation. I think are um are applicable. We can test them in a few other ways, but the but the numbers we're putting forward, I think are are realistic. All right, so we've got seventy eight percent now. Share the results to you all. Fifty four percent are, yes, they would support the recommendations, thirty one percent are at maybe. Eight percent are at no. And another eight percent are at needing more information. Good. So you cannot have um a discussion about density on a property without also a discussion about parking. So presently. Based upon the parking requirements of the the town's bylaw. You would have, um, and you can see the calculations to the right of our illustration. You'd have potentially um fourteen spaces required for the ground floor if it were a retail space. Eight spaces required for the upper level, second story, if it were. Um, four housing units, which we think is reasonable. And four additional units at that third floor would be another eight parking spaces. So you'd have a total of thirty. Parking spaces required to support that box which we've drawn. As you can see, the diagram that we have for the parking area shows only eighteen parking spaces at this point. So to get thirty parking spaces on the property, again, you're going to have to overlap the building and the parking area. Or you're going to have to do other um more expensive ways to get more parking on your property. Such as tucking parking underneath the building footprint. Um, building a parking deck, which is probably pretty unrealistic. Um, and. Um, other or other gymnastics. That one, one exception to that is the overlay district, the Village Center Overlay District, V C O D. Does have a more relaxed parking requirement for the ground floor space. So instead of one space per four hundred square feet, it's one space for twelve hundred square feet. Which would bring that parking requirement down to five. Which would mean it is only twenty one parking spaces required, which is almost in alignment with the dugout with the diagram that we're showing. So here you see some of those parking requirements that are in the bylaw today for other uses. And they go on for all the uses, really. And here's just a little bit more about the. Village Center Overlay District. We also asked about parking in general terms last meeting. And this was similar to the setback responses where it's a little indeterminate. But the. Um, most frequent responses were less parking than currently provided, the same amount is currently provided. Uh, followed shortly thereafter by more parking than is currently required or provided. And so not, uh, hopefully not surprising, uh, if you're you're piecing all this together, but we would advocate for and recommend. Um, reducing the parking requirements to increase flexibility on the property. So uh, this would be required, reducing requirements for the ground floor uses and for residential uses. And to allow to an additional shared parking reduction. Which which is um in the language of the bylaw today, but I think we can um. Elevate that and and potentially clarify it. So in this case, what we we recommend is um. Reducing the residential from two parking spaces per unit to one and a half parking spaces per unit. And that would bring tho- those top two floors down to six parking spaces required for each. And to go ahead and use the V C O D um ground floor requirement of one space per twelve hundred square feet, which would bring that down to five. So that brings you in alignment with the diagram that we're showing, which would be seventeen required parking spaces. And then if you allowed a fifteen percent shared parking reduction on top of that. It would bring it down to fourteen required parking spaces. And that that is potentially useful for some of the landscape. Uh, and open space improvements that we're going to be asking for uh in a few recommendations as well. So by. Reducing the amount of parking, we're increasing the amount of flexibility for other things. Parking, of course, is not free. Um, there's many studies which show that. Um, the provision of parking, uh, surface parking and and free parking for uses encourages car ownership, encourages traffic. And encourages uses, use of automobiles. The other reason parking is not free is the economic concept of opportunity cost. If you use the land for parking, it cannot be used for other things. Sometimes those other things are more valuable to the community or more valuable to development than parking. So those are all the reasons, uh, among others, why parking is is not free and needs to be considered carefully. So would you uh support that recommendation? Of. Decreasing the required parking for a project to increase redevelopment flexibility and feasibility. Yeah, I'm trying to, so I was trying to catch up with some of the chatting a little bit and. So yes, the the assumption a lot of these diagrams are based upon at this moment is the um. What is correctly characterized in the chat as the lukewarm response to potentially assembling properties, which would be. Uh, a portion of a property to the rear potentially of a non G B D two or G B D three uh parcel. Um. We will, we will revisit these recommendations and the diagrams which we would put with our recommendations. Uh, to potentially make some modifications. Um, and and so some of these ideas, I think the reduction of parking overall becomes even more important. If if the community is less willing to consider an expansion of the the building lot. So with that, um. Looks like most people have answered. Sixty seven percent support, yes, um nineteen percent maybe. Fifteen percent no. It's like we had provided enough information for everyone on that one. All right, we're a little over halfway through these, so thank you for just trucking along with us. The next is in regard to the use regulations, and we have some minor suggestions around the use regulations um. Today, uh. It looks like our, sorry, my my subtitle there is still from the parking, so that just ignore that, but this is more about the use regulations. Today, a combination of business and residential uses requires a special permit. So you see that highlighted here. Also around allowed by right is the outdoor parking of commercial vehicles, which to me does not seem consistent with the vision, which has been articulated in draft form. Or the goals. And that also occurs in the G B D two, where a combination of business and residence residential uses allowed is allowed by special permit. We asked about the uses in the previous meeting, again, in general terms. And the. Use, most people like to see more of is mixed use with residential businesses, twenty three percent. Or small outdoor spaces, another twenty three percent. And then what would, what would people like to see less of? Auto services, repair and fuel, although we did see some comments at the previous meeting that some people find those services very useful and like walking to them. So. In in order to increase the predictability of desired uses. We think that it's important to move that combination of business and residential uses to be permitted as of right. And that a lot of the other um. Recommendations that we're making would be the ones that are requiring a special permit. So it's not saying that we would move all of these conditions to as of right. But that the the core use that you're trying to encourage and desire on the corridor. Um, should be made as of right, and people should have a certain sense of guarantee. That that's the type of use that the community wants, and and that's what we're hearing. So uh, I would put the special permit onto some of the other. Feasibility recommendations, um, but not onto the use, the core use itself. And then we can also clean up that one, a parking of outdoor commercial vehicles was the other um. Uh, incongruity we found. So uh, here's the poll. Would you support modification to? Have business and residential uses permitted as of right? To increase the predictability of redevelopment. Okay, we've hit the seventy percent threshold, which I've seen has been about typical. Thank you all for giving those votes in. So fifty four percent, yes, I would support this recommendation, thirty one percent maybe. Eight percent no, eight percent I don't know, need more information. So thank you for. Continuing with this. Series. So next, I, we're we're now shifting into that um alignment of the of the investments with the community's goals and vision. So next is about the building design requirements, and we'll, we will continue to add more uh to this set. But first, there there are not really uh presently in the bylaw. Requirements in 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 the G B D two or G B D three for the roof form. Uh, there is a little bit about the parking location, about the orientation to the street. And other things. We asked, there was a lot of items which you're all very interested in having um. Design guidelines about on North Main Street, so these can be features of the the uh, the work. I would, I would suggest that some of these are important enough to become design standards, which would be part of the zoning bylaw. Design guidelines are usually um. And a uh companion to the bylaw itself and not mandatory, they're they are guidance, they're they're not. Uh, obligated to follow that. So a few of the items which I think should be in that realm of standards which are required. And then would be supplemented by some of the additional topics you all highlighted in the the previous meeting. The pitched roof, I think, is a big one. I think requiring a pitched roof. Is is a way to make consistent. Uh, the aesthetics of North Main Street and make it more consistent with. Um, some of the historic structures which remain and the residential character of the abutting streets. The articulation of that roof through dormers, gable ends, um chimneys. Other, other ways to break down a large roof mass, I think, should be required also. The articulation of the facade so that there are bay windows, bump outs, uh pushing and pulling of the building form and massing so that it's not just one. Large uh building volume, I think are required. There is some discussion today in the bylaw about a base middle and top of the building, the base should be further defined and differentiated from the. The upper portions of the structure. And then the entry and window pattern, I think we can put some language around that as well to make sure that you're getting. Results in terms of the investments which you want to see in terms of their aesthetics and attractiveness for the corridor. So are those um? Just that initial flavor. The types of things that you would like to see, in particular. I think what I would, what I would also frame this question as is is focused on the pitched roof requirement. So if if you do not like the pitched roof requirement, um, then I would suggest that. You do not show support for this, but if you do like the pitch group requirement, I would suggest you do support. Right, looks like we just. And also, all right, sharing it back to you, sixty seven percent, yes, I would support this recommendation, nineteen percent need. Maybe eleven percent no. And then. Four percent needing more information. All right, so we're rounding the corner on these. So next is streetscape and landscape requirements. Uh, today, there there are not really too many streetscape and landscape requirements. Um, there are. There's a four foot wide strip at the rear of the property, particularly if it butts a parking lot. Uh, to uh conceal the the glare from vehicular headlights. There are. Um, no landscape requirements for small parking lots, but once you get over twenty one parking spaces, a two percent. Interior parking landscape area is required. The front yard is required to either be landscaped or paved as a patio area. There are no street chief, street tree requirements. Um, garage doors cannot be located on the front wall of the building. So those are the things that I found. And I would recommend a few items to get more. Greenery and specifically more shade trees into the North Main Street area. First is requiring street trees at a minimum of one every forty feet for the frontage of the property that is being improved. And this could either be in the form of a landscape bump out. That would add additional space, it might remove an on-street parking space, but it would add additional space for landscape. Or it could take place uh in the form of a tree grate built into the sidewalk. Which may um necessitate a widening of the sidewalk to allow for accessibility. Also, I would suggest increasing the amount of landscaped parking area from two percent to five percent. And requiring interior uh landscaping with shade trees. And that a minimum. Si- a similar requirement for shade trees at the rear property line, one every forty feet would occur. And that, just a side note, um, all the green area shown in this diagram is four thousand square feet, which is about twenty four percent. Of the overall lot area. So that's another approach. Currently, there is no percentage requirement of landscape area in the G B D two or G B D three. But based upon our our analysis, we could introduce a minimum. Requirement by percentage of the total lot area, twenty four percent is probably. Ambitious, too high, um, but it could, but it could be a requirement which we think is reaching towards that. Level of ambition so that you have a a certain um standard of of greenery that occurs in landscape that will occur in the property. So what about this set of increased landscape requirements? Uh, would you support this type of approach? Great, thank you all for. Jumping on that one so quickly. So I've ended that one pretty quick too, so seventy eight percent believe that they would, yes, support their recommendation, eleven percent maybe, eleven percent no. So thank you for that, we're almost. Here to the end, so next is is a similar approach to pedestrian safety requirements. Presently, there are no requirements for a property to contribute to pedestrian safety around that property. Um, obviously, the sentiment for those improvements is there that they are needed. People want to see them. And I and I do believe as part of the zoning. You can require, uh, and it would be appropriate to require. Pedestrian improvements, contributions from a investment from a redevelopment property. To the immediate adjacent circumstances around that property, so that might be be sidewalk improvements. It might be uh improving a crossing, it might be adding a new crossing if that's appropriate. It might be uh improving a crossing, it might be adding a new crossing if that's appropriate. Um, it might be uh restriping, adding a flashing beacon, adding a curb extension. Um, and of course, that that would be um based upon the circumstances around the property. It might include. Might include also uh adding a share or some other bike amenity. So those um would be required, but would also be, there would be some. You not some generality to it because it would be based upon the specific circumstances around the property. But it would be framed as a requirement that needs to be reviewed. So what is your thought? Oops, sorry, did that wrong? So what is your thought about? Adding those into the the bylaw. As a set of requirements to advance pedestrian safety in the quarter. And bicycle safety in the corridor. And and that that's not to say that this is the only way improvements for bicycle and pedestrian safety may occur. There there are, of course, um investments the town can be making, uh studies the town can be making, uh follow up with the. Town engineering, complete streets, now programs, uh Mass Works grants, all of those things. But this, I think, gives you another avenue for incremental improvement on the quarter. So thank you for that and. The results. Seventy-nine percent, yes, they would support the recommendation, twenty-one percent are at a maybe, is a little more information needed. And then open space requirements follow a similar vein where today. Uh, there just are no, no open space requirements by percentage or or other means really. And uh the addition of open spaces was one of the uses people wanted to see more of uh as as the most. So the recommendation here is similar to the pedestrian improvements and that would be to require. The contribution uh through the private investment. To expand a network of plazas and po- pocket parks throughout the North Main Street corridor. And that would be requiring a small percentage of publicly accessible plaza or pocket park space. To be designed with the site and building design of that property. So it might be a small plaza at the entry, it might be a landscape seating area, however, it could work out with the the development program. Uh, and the layout. In this case, what we're showing on that um lined front area, which is a plaza. Is about three point eight percent. So, you know, it could be somewhere in the neighborhood of a four percent. Requirement or a three percent requirement for a publicly accessible space. Um, and I don't think that would be overly onerous. A pocket park is just a phrase for a smaller park. So thi- this is a modest park, which would be have real benefit as a um. Smaller area for people to have a place to relax, have a place to eat outdoors. It could be connected to the building program and um be of 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 quite good value to the property itself, end of the quarter. So here's the poll for that. So would you support? The increase of. Required open spaces part of the. The development requirements. All right, we've had our seventy, seventy percent mark. So sixty-eight percent thought that was also a good idea, sixteen percent maybe, sixteen percent no. Thank you again for your quick response on all these. The next is about historic preservation. Uh, so the town has a demolition delay by law which provides some protection, but of course is not, is not the ultimate answer because after the delay. A property can still be demolished. Um, there aren't necessarily preservation incentives that are built into the GBD two or GBD three today. And as I did mention in a response to an earlier chat question, there are. Uh, macros historic surveyed properties which could be, um, which is available, we mapped them in a previous diagram in the last meeting. And that could be used to show and identify properties which may be eligible for historic preservation incentive in the district. The CBD does have incentives, uh which we could model this upon, so they waive special permit. Or variance requirements for restoring building elements, including floors and waiving the requirement of any additional parking. So I thought I'd float this one by you all to see what your reaction is to it, but I think you could go a step farther. With an incentive for historic preservation in the North Main Street corridor. And that would be allowing a addition of a similarly dense property. The the density of a property that we're outlining in these zoning characteristics. With a historic structure. And that you would encourage the preservation of that structure and allow the addition to still be as as dense. But not require the the maximum. Uh, the parking requirements that would be needed to support it. So you're basically saying, save the building. Build what you can fit on your property and and we we're not going to be as concerned about the other requirements. Because we're most focused on preserving that great building. And having you still have economically viable redevelopment project. So it's more about the building area than the other components of that property. But I think that the the benefit there is the the potential that you would actually have a more powerful incentive for preservation in the corridor. But you all might not think so. So I I'm interested to see how you react to that idea. Let's see how that goes right now. So would you support the recommendation to increase what is allowed? When a redevelopment preserves a historic structure as part of the redevelopment. And what I didn't mention on the previous slide, and I'll mention here as we get the votes in, is that the the present, the addition. Could be structured around the guidelines which have been put forward by the Secretary of Interior's. Preservation standards around additions and new construction. And they make very clear some guidance around how a new addition should be um secondary to the historic structure. Be complimentary, complimentary to the historic structure. And be um have other characteristics which would help it to fit with the historic structure which is being preserved. So there there are precedents and guidance to make this type of thing a successful project. So it looks like we're almost to our seventy percent threshold, right, usually say, and so thank you for getting those last votes on. Great. It's a little more mixed on this one, so forty-eight percent, yes, I would support this recommendation, thirty, thirty-two percent maybe. But need to know a little bit more about it. Eight percent no and twelve percent uh need a lot more information, I'm just not not sure about what's going on. With that idea. All right, so. We're getting really close to our time, so just get these last two in. Then the affordable housing requirement would be similar. Um, today you have an incentive built in. Where you're allowed to go from one FAR to one point two five if you have fifteen percent affordable dwelling units. Most people think that having more affordable units required in the in the corridor is a good thing, forty-five percent at fifteen percent. And I would suggest, um, because we're increasing the overall, potentially increasing the overall height to three and a half stories. And overall density to go along with that to one point two. It makes the one point two five incentive for affordable housing, it undercuts that incentive. So I think we should make a commensurate uh elevation of the affordable housing incentive. To move that up to one point four zero FAR. And that one point four zero FAR would align with a full four-story structure. And I think you could achieve that by not going too far, too much farther in terms of the building height. But if you give about another five feet, move it up to fifty feet total. You could get a more usable fourth floor, so it's probably a little more, it's closer to four stories than it is three and a half stories in terms of usable area. On that, in that roof peaked uh top floor. Um, and this would, this would potentially drive more incentive towards that affordable housing requirement. But I also understand, oh, there was some reluctance and not as much support for moving to four stories. So I see where that, I want to see where that balance and tipping point is in terms of who would like to see that trade off. And if you think it's an appropriate incentive. Uh, so let's do that. Here's the. Second till that, or I guess the, almost. Got one extra poll up there. And I apologize, with the with the planning board meeting starting at eight thirty, it just looks like uh we had a little bit too of a packed. Meeting in terms of content, so I don't think we're going to get to have much of a chance to discuss. So in that case, I I do invite you to reach out to us by email um or or follow up phone call. And we we can have additional continuation of this conversation with you. And Yolanda, if you wouldn't mind, if you could also put my email address in the chat, so people could have that too. Thank you. All right, so seventy-nine percent have responded. The. Results are forty-one percent would like to see that, and that was tied with the no, so forty-one percent both for yes and no. With fifteen percent in the maybe category, so this what, this is the most. Um, I think right down the line in terms of uh yes and no responses. So thank you for that. We'll we'll be exploring this a little bit more and seeing how affordable housing can balance. Oh, you know, get the appropriate incentives so that it's still a part of the the mix here. And then lastly. Is all, the stewardship of all of these recommendations in in potentially a revised set of zoning circumstances for the the corridor. The current special permit granting authority is the zoning board of appeals. And we think that there would be a reasonable modification. Uh, given the stewardship for a process such as this, the the closeness of the planning board to this process and its recommendations. To change that special permit granting authority to the planning board. To have the the uh stewardship and over- oversight that they could provide. As projects come through with these new set of recommendations potentially. That's of course af- assuming that they would go to town meeting and be past the town meeting. Um, so a few steps between here and there, but then they would be the stewards of this moving forward. So would you support that type of change? So that's what's on the screen for you now with the poll. Uh, the recommendation to modify the special permit granting authority to be the planning board for North Main Street. As opposed to the zoning board of appeals. Okay, really getting done to my last minutes here, so I'm going to go a little quicker. So at sixty-five percent, yes, they would support this and twelve percent maybe, fifteen percent no. All right, and then I did want to do one last poll. Which hasn't, so we've gone through all of the recommendations and touched on each of them, you've gotten a feel for what this looks like. And I wanted to ask a question overall about the entire initial set of recommendations. Um, just how do you feel? Uh, and this is helpful because we didn't get a chance yet to to discuss them and hear your comments. But this will help get a, give us a shorthand for what you're thinking about all of this together. And so do you think this initial recommendations uh fits with the needs for North Main Street overall? Is it very close to what needs to happen? Is it close? Is it okay? Is it not close? Are we way off? Are are we very far off in terms of what our thinking is for what should be happening here and how the recommendations should be shaping up? Great, all right, so thank you. Just at that seventy percent marker. So it looks like we're, we're thankfully um not way off. Um, but we we would, could stand to do some refinement and improvement to get more of you into the very close or close range. So we will continue to uh look at the comments you provided this evening, review the results, um and. I'm sorry, I didn't share that and get get this, uh continue to build upon this as a foundation of the recommendations. Just before you all shift over to your planning board meeting and agenda, I did want to give you a feel for the next steps in this process, so. We will be continuing to refine these recommendations, uh again, building upon. Your feedback, the feedback that we get, uh maybe with some subsequent conversations and uh digging through the chat information you provided this evening and reactions. We'll draft a report with the recommendations, present those recommendations back to the planning board. June, maybe at the end of this month or the beginning of the next month. And then uh have a a bit of public comment period on that draft report and recommendations. And then work with the planning board will continue to discuss potential town meeting zoning warrants. And additional community meetings will be a part of that process. So there there will be a continued conversation around all of this, but it it seems like from this evening that we have a pretty solid footing. In terms of where this is all headed, and I think have a lot of good information to build upon. So we really do thank you for for bearing with us and what was a really overloaded meeting, but we had a lot to communicate to you and get your initial reaction to. So um if you have other questions, please do reach out to us. Uh, I'd be happy to speak with you all by phone or have an email conversation if that's easier. Um, but we do want to make sure that we we get to have some additional conversation, although we didn't get a chance to this evening. So with that, um, I appreciate that. I don't, Brian, I don't know if you have some instructions to get people transported into your planning board meeting. Oh, sorry, I need, I think I need to allow you to unmute yourself.
Hi there, thanks. Um, thanks for that, Josh. That was really packed. Um. Uh, I can put in the chat the link for our uh planning board meeting, but I was gonna log off just a second. I'm gonna put this in the chat right now. Uh, to get on over to our regular planning board meeting, but uh I wanted to thank everybody for coming and also. Uh, in addition to emailing Josh, uh you can always email the planning department or the planning board at planningboard@winnchester.us. Thanks, everybody for coming. I'm gonna sign off here and give it back to Josh.
Thank you, Brian, and again, a hearty thanks to all of you for bearing with us this evening on on. What typically is is not this packed of a meeting, we apologize for not giving everyone a chance to offer your own perspectives. Um, but please do offer them in other ways, uh and we'll, we will post the recording for this meeting and the information that we presented. Uh, with the other presentation on the town website and make that into a YouTube video for you all. Uh, and we really do appreciate it and uh enjoy your playing board meeting and and enjoy your evening. So thank you very much.
Okay. You let everyone in, Brian. That was very quick.
Everyone is in.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Welcome to the June eighth, twenty twenty one Planning Board Meeting of the Town of Winchester. I am the chair. We have with us from the planning board, teaching Scott and Sally Dale. And we are hoping to be joined by Heather Hannan. And our newest member Cheryl Wolf will unfortunately not be able to join us. We have a very tight schedule this evening. So I will be asking people to stick to the time slots that I'm going to give them. So we're going to be talking, we're going to have a presentation on ten Congress place by Ian Gillespie and company and Admiliora. We will then have a couple of petitions going for the ZBA that we will be discussing. We will then discuss how we are going to put together the Master Plan Implementation Committee. After that, we will have a discussion on whether or how the planning board will respond to the referendum to put the land development agreement about the waterfield lot, either to keep it as it is or to withdraw the motion that was approved, excuse me, approved by town meeting. And that is it. So at this point, why don't we hand control on Brian? Do you have anything you want to say before we jump into Congress place?
No, I think I think we should move forward with the, even though it says eight thirty to nine thirty here. I think that you had said that the goal was maybe to give the floor to them for forty five or fifty minutes and then open up to the planning board for ten or fifteen. Was that was that?
Yeah, yeah, I wanted to do that. I just realized that we did have a question that hopefully we'll get to the end if Heather joins us, which is to discuss whether we should reschedule our next meeting, which falls on the same date as the special election. And typically, the planning board does not meet on election nights. So we'll have that discussion at the end, but please let's not forget that. That's important. So why don't we give the floor to Ian for forty five minutes? And we'll come back and have a little bit of discussion with the board. So Brian, you are the master of ceremonies.
Sure. So Ian, I can do any way here. I have the PDF that you had sent and I can go through it. Or it might be easier if you wanted to take control and then drive, drive the bus.
Well, thank you. I assume you can hear me. Okay.
Yeah, fair enough.
And what I'd love to do is ask you in a couple of minutes to perhaps share it with David Tbenkin, if he's here, or David Hassein. David, are you driving the boat?
I think David Tbenkin is, yes.
Oh, there he is. So if you can share, if that's okay with you, Brian, in a couple of minutes. So just by way of introduction, Chair Jarius and members of the board were pleased to be back with you for the discussion of ten Converse Place. Because the members of the three members of the board at any rate have not seen this project officially before, we thought we would ask the architects, David Tbenkin and David Hassein, to take you through a presentation that we had done for the select board some months ago. The benefit of this particular presentation is that it reviews a history of the project with the planning board. So we hope that would help. My name is Ian Gillespie and I'm joined this evening by my partners and colleagues, Jan Steenberga and Paul Sutley. This presentation does not include references to the many meetings we also had with the board's peer reviewer, Dennis Carlon. But Dennis was kind enough to say to this board in its previous incarnation that this was the best design he had seen in doing more than fifty of these peer reviews over the course of the years. Dennis, of course, also had a significant hand in helping the town in the planning that led up to the central business district rezoning. This project design is directly linked to what the planning board presented to that town meeting and to the will of the town as expressed in that vote. The rezoning was approved by ninety two percent of the two thousand fifteen town meeting after thirteen years of study. If members of this current board disagree with the conclusions of that town meeting, we would ask them to revisit the institutional memory of that meeting in the video from Wind Cam. I've had the good fortune of watching it all too many times. We have two or three alternative paths for this project. After the presentation by David and David, we would welcome a robust discussion with the board about which alternative direction we should take. And with that, let me turn it over to David Hassein.
Thank you, Ian. And David, if you could pull up the presentation. First of all, I would like to say that it's a pleasure to be back with you tonight and to introduce myself to the two new board members that are here with us tonight. Congratulations on becoming members of the board. And I look forward to meeting Cheryl at some point in the future. And presumably she'll have the benefit of seeing this as a recording. So as Ian mentioned, I'm going to quickly take you through the select board presentation we made about a year ago. I do want you to know that I had an opportunity to watch the discussion that this group had recently about this project. So I am aware of some of the questions that you have that I will try and address as I go through the presentation tonight. So first slide, please. These first few slides are going to look familiar to you, I believe. So first of all, I'm just going to reiterate the CBT zoning goals, just so that we are all on the same page, that the goal here is to build new multifamily residences in the CBD to provide fifteen percent affordable residential units to create new retail space that reinforces the existing street character of the town of Winchester, allow up to a three point O FAR while balancing building volume and open space, creating meaningful publicly accessible open space. And yes, all the spaces that we have shown are publicly accessible open spaces and meet the objectives of the CBD Design Guidelines, elements of form, which I'll talk about a little bit later in the presentation. So at our first planning board meeting back in January of twenty twenty, we did a rather long presentation of the site history, site observations and a zoning outline. But tonight I will just share a few slides from that presentation. One, which is the aerial photograph from nineteen forty six showing the buildings that occupied the site at that time, including the laundry building, which remains in place, as well as a number of other structures and parking areas that filled that whole area of the site. Next slide, please. Today, this is what that site aerial would look like as an abstraction. The laundry building remains reclad sitting on that site. There were a number of questions about the various property lines and so forth that were indicated on a previous presentation. And this, the lines that you see right there are the property line. There are a number of setback areas from the watershed that overlap the property lines in a couple of areas. And I should just note that the that those areas cannot be built on. They are counted towards the open space calculation of the of the property. And all the things that we're going to show you do not cross that line conceptually. So this is, you were looking at these in a plan form at your earlier meeting, but this is an axonometric illustration of what a zoning FAR of three might look like on the site in four, five and six stories. All three of these masses are approximately the same square footage. And the variance is really the building height. So as you can see, moving from left to right, what changes is the result in open space from eleven percent to thirty percent to fifty percent. And so in the scheme on the right, which shows a six story building, we are able to achieve a fifty percent open space, resultant open space on the site. It's probably also worth noting that while these are very abstract massing diagrams, that the building on the left does not lend itself to housing. Housing dimensions are typically around sixty to seventy feet in across in order to create a sort of a traditional double loaded corridor situation. The building on the left is more akin to an office floor plate. The, what we learned at that board meeting, number one, was that we should explore the fifty percent open space option. So at the second planning board meeting, about a month later, we presented three design concepts for a six story scheme. And this is something that you also reviewed recently at your planning meeting called the urban edge, the soft edge and the figural edge. The urban edge was a response to the facade of the fire station, a more formal green space that extended to the water. The soft edge was a building that held Mount Vernon Street, but then slowly and gradually shifted towards the pond, creating a kind of an arc of green space along the waterfront, sort of an attenuated pedestrian path. And then finally, a figural edge, which filled more of the site up on Mount Vernon Street, the more urban portion of the site, allowing the opportunity to create a figural public space on the waterfront. And the three images that you see below are illustrations of that idea. Again, all three of these open spaces would be publicly accessible spaces built and maintained by the developer. But the board, I think, gave us fairly clear direction at that meeting that they were interested in exploring the figural edge scheme. At the third planning board meeting, a month after that, we showed development of the preferred six story scheme. And I want to emphasize that even at this point, this wasn't intended to be a final design. This was an illustration of a design. We know that we will be spending quite a bit of time working with you on the details of the architecture. But we wanted to show you what this six story scheme might look like. So in the next slide, you see a plan that shows looking down on the site, the figural green space at the waterfront, which David is indicating right now, a pedestrian path that went all the way around the site and a series of volumes that setback. So the sort of jagged lines that you see across the top were the expression of an articulated roof line. This is a view of the ground floor plan of that scheme that we showed. At this, at this point, the, what this ground floor accommodates is a number of things. One is a ramp to underground parking, a two way ramp to underground parking off of Converse Place. This is important because this is getting the parking below grade is a pretty significant aspect of the project, a big expense. It's adjacent to a waterway. We have to basically build a bathtub on the site in order to accommodate this. We were, we feel fortunate that the configuration of Converse Place allows us to create access for the parking that minimally disrupts the character of the surrounding facades because it's really a four, a building with four facades. We're showing retail along Mount Vernon Street. At this point, we were showing a restaurant with a restaurant terrace on the corner of Mount Vernon and the pedestrian walkway, residential amenities, and then a residential lobby at the waterside with an entrance at the on Converse Place and an entrance and drop off on Converse Place. Next slide, please. So this was, we, you'll see these same views over and over again. This was a view looking down Mount Vernon towards Town Hall, showing the expression of a four story brick volume along Mount Vernon with a setback. And then two stories of a different material, different roof line setback from the street for the total of six stories. But clearly trying to create a four story expression that worked in harmony with the other buildings on Mount Vernon. Next slide, please. And then as you're coming into town from the other side, Town Hall's on the left, the idea that the four story volume stepped up to a five story brick volume as it turned the corner with a single mansard style roof line along the top of the building with a series of terraces and green spaces carved into the into the building. This is a view from the bridge, looking down, looking across the pond towards Town Hall and the library and such. This is showing the expression of the lobby entrance at that intersection at Converse Place and the waterfront. And I noted that one of you had mentioned, I think it was Yi Ching had mentioned that it would be helpful to see this in the context of some of the other development that might be built along where the white building is where and and some of those other buildings. And I think that in one presentation, we had that, but we don't have that tonight. But we could absolutely do that in the future if that was something that you wanted to see. Next slide, please. The reaction to that was that it was needed refinement on the six story scheme, but that there was also a desire to revisit the five story scheme and understand what the compromise might be for the public open space at the waterfront if we dropped a floor. And so we came back to you in April with a side by side version of these two schemes. So I'll show that to you now. First, these are some conceptual landscape plans by our landscape architect, Kopley Wolf. On the left hand side, you see the six story scheme with an oval, a pretty generous oval green space at the waterfront, the pedestrian pass that we talked about hugging the edge of the pond and the idea of significantly upgrading and reconstructing Converse Place with brick and granite. With brick and granite and really making that a, we call it a woonerf in Dutch terminology. But a pedestrianized street that would have traffic calming and would be a very welcoming way. For people to walk through and around the site. On the right-hand side, you see the five-story scheme. So the five-story scheme involves taking more of the ground plane, a little bit more of the territory. It shrinks the, the public space. But we try to hold on to this concept of the figural space down at the waterfront. By sort of narrowing the oval, engaging it with the building and still holding on to those other elements. That we thought were positive, like the woonerf and the pedestrian walkway around the building and so forth. So this was really an attempt to sort of create a compromise between the six-story and the five-story situation. So this was showing the modified six-story. So we had the four, four-story brick volume again on Mount Vernon. We raised the brick up on the sides. To make a less sort of blunt expression of the upper stories relative to the lower stories. And reduce the complexity up there by creating what we called four lanterns marching along the waterfront. Again, this was not intended to be the final architectural expression. But the concept of sort of four pavilions down the, the street there. Creating a syncopated and rhythmic roof line in town. And then this contrasts with the next slide, which shows you the five-story version. Which again, obviously drops a story. Allows us to express it's the four stories of the brick on all sides of the building. And create a setback to a, a different material and a different roof line on the upper floors. Now you'll see that in a couple, in the next few slides as well. So this is looking at the six-story version from across Town Hall. Again, those lanterns kind of marching around the edge of the building. The fact that the building is quite a bit shorter, so you can see past it. Towards the white space, which is a view of the bridge and so forth. And our, our initial attempts to sort of break down the scale. With a series of ups and downs and volumes and so forth. The, this is the five-story version, which obviously comes down in height, but extends deeper into the site. Again, we've simplified, we've tried to simplify the brick expression. Very sort of traditional cornice base and so forth across the, around the side of the building. And a setback, you know, slate or metal roof line. With a series of sort of discreet dormers and pavilions as they march around the site. This, the scale of this, for example, is, is very typical of, you know, some streets in the Back Bay, Marlborough Street. This is the scale of Marlborough Street. And, and then a view looking at, looking at the project from the bridge. In this, this is the five, the six-story version where the building is pushed back from the edge of the, of the waterfront. Creating a lot of visual space between it and the view of Town Hall. At this point, we've expressed a five stories of brick and then a roof line. Here is the five-story version, which extends a little bit deeper. Still has a very generous green space. More of an undulating brick facade and some articulation at the front door. To sort of mark that front door and create a celebrated facade around the pond. Like so many of the other beautiful buildings that face the pond. So I think that the direction that we got at that meeting was, as I recall, was to really, let's, let's work on refinements to the five-story scheme. That this, this seemed to have promise as a, as a good compromise. So we came to you in May of 2020. With a refined version of this five-story scheme. And I, this is the moment when I want to reflect on the CBD guidelines. To create functionally diverse and animated downtown development. To strengthen the public ways and the open space system. To provide new structures that are compatible with Winchester's historic architecture and sense of place. This is very important to us and to me personally. To create new buildings in additions that are timeless, subtle and elegant structures. That will always feel comfortable and inviting to the general public. And finally, at a more detailed level, to work at properly scaled windows, masonry articulation setbacks, animated silhouettes. And the use of materials that are warm. I should say that the development of the architecture that we're about to show you in this, which we showed the board before. Was really at a higher level than we would normally show at a conceptual design level. But we wanted to begin to illustrate the kinds of things that we were, that we cared about. And that we would plan on working with you on in more detail as we moved forward. So here is the revised ground floor plan of the five-story scheme. Showing the oval at the water, the, the walkway that moves around the oval. The oval again is a public open space, a little sort of park, if you will. Adjacent to a residential lobby, excuse me, residential lobby and amenities. A retail restaurant space that wrapped the corner from Mount Vernon around the pond. We also, as you can see here, introduced some softer forms on the waterside of the building from the earlier scheme. I, I noted a number of you mentioned at the last meeting that we don't want a box and we agree, we don't want a box. And so this was a place where we started to introduce some curving brick forms. That really invited the public around so that the landscape side of the building that faces the mill pond had a softer profile. And the more architectural harder edge was sort of embedded into, into the town. You can also of course see the ramp and service and so forth at Converse Place. This is Copley Wolf's elaboration of that scheme with their notes about all the, you know, wonderful details of places to sit. Shade trees, benches, new lighting, steps down to the water, et cetera. I know that in one of the comments that was made here was, was a question about whether we should have. Less retail and more residential entrances around the ground floor of the building. And that was something we were prepared to explore, but we stopped at this point, which, you know, we'll, we'll come back to in a moment. Next slide, so this is the last thing that we showed the board. Which was a four-story architectural expression along Mount Vernon Street. With a significantly setback mansard style copper roof line. That incorporated dormers and chimney-like elements. That were again intended to recall 19th century rhythms of, of townhouse and lower-scale architecture. As well as a special element on, on the other corner, which we'll show you in a moment, right there. So this is coming into town, looking at that soft corner as the brick and the retail wraps around. And towards a facade, residential facade going down the street. Again, with this mansard style roof. There were some questions as to whether the brick chimney elements were a little too prominent. That was something that we were absolutely willing to take a look at and explore in later iterations, but of course, we didn't get there. So this is that view of the, the building from this vantage point. Next slide please. This is the, the view of the building, you know, no one really ever looks at buildings like this because you always see them as a, as an ensemble. But this is a view of the building itself, showing the radius corner, the potential for restaurant retail. And extending the retail character of Mount Vernon Street along the edge. With three stories of residences up above. I think it's worth noting that the fifth story, and this is true of many of our projects all around the region. By setting this fifth story back, it really disappears. And the expression is more almost of a copper cornice than of a full fifth floor. This is looking back across from the mill pond at the entrance to the building. And the curved facade of the, of the oval. Which I, I know my clients are nervous about, it's an expensive feature. As it, as it curves and wraps around, you have to get all special bricks. It's a, it's a whole kind of production to do curved brick facades. But we, we think that this could be a beautiful element as it turns the corner. And then breaking down that Converse Place facade into a series of stepped facades. So it really almost looks more like a residential townhouse street. Next, next slide. And then this is looking, I mean, where you're, you're right in the mill pond at this point, but this is looking back at the building. Showing that soft curve of red brick as it embraces the oval at the waterfront. And then the setback copper roof line as it wraps around the building. And the trees and so forth that we're showing are accurate. This is a view down the woonerf, what that might look and feel like. It's got a nice scale and as you can see, we're thinking about obviously extending the, the character of the brick sidewalks and lanterns and so forth. Of Winchester, but also introducing brick and granite and traffic calming elements in the street. Down Converse Place, as with a destination of the water. This would probably be a lot of a way a lot of people would walk to the water and to the, to the oval. Kind of creates a new street in town. And lastly, I believe this is the view of the building. Very much inspired by the scale and character of 19th century and early 20th century town buildings. I, I travel all over Massachusetts from Pittsfield and all of the towns across Massachusetts, always making note. Of the scale of the, of the, of the, the small bank buildings and residential buildings and so forth in the town. And that's what very much inspired this architectural expression. You can see the oval, the public space oval, the sort of generous space between the building and the waterfront. And then even though there's a tree in the way, the sort of framed view of Town Hall in the distance magnificent building that it is. And oh yes, and thank you David for circling the, also the view of the Richardsonian turret at the end of Converse Place. We see all of these elements in, in dialogue with one another. And I guess this is the last slide, which is the view of the open space. You know, I don't know that it's would be just end up being a big green piece of grass. I think that the idea would be benches and seating and so forth, but you know, that would be something we would develop with you in meetings ahead. A spectacular vista on, on the town. So I tried to answer some of your questions as I went through the presentation, but obviously. We're here to, for any additional questions and feedback.
David, thank you very much. Every time I see this, I just. For the members of the board, you have to know it's a joy to work with, with David and his team. Mr. Chairman, we've spent, as you can see, close to a million dollars to bring the permitting of this project to this status. And we need to know if this project is going to work for the board with some additional tweaks or not. It is, we know, a rather stark question, but it needs to be asked. And let me ask Yan, did you have any comments at this point? You're muted.
Sorry about that. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Thank you for having us. We're excited to get this project started again, but as Ian said, we really need firm guidance. We cannot lose another year in planning, this is not possible. Also, I would like to, I know, in advance apologize. That we might go about this slightly different than we went about Main Street, where we really tried to get as much. Unanimity, unanimity, everybody doing free on the board, unanimity, that's the word, I'm sorry it's late. But in this case, I mean, the rules have changed, that's enforced by the state, that's not by us. We only need three votes, so we are trying to. On relatively fast way, try to find out, can we get three votes yes or no? And if not, we need to move on, just the sheer economics of it. We can't just keep going back and forth for, for, for another year. That said, I think we have a great project. I was very impressed with the planning board in your last hearing. So I'm actually very hopeful we can come to a wonderful project here. But let, let's get this done. So I think it's in everybody's best interest to get this done.
And I just.
Last thing we want is, is, is to keep the current building and just put a block on the street, you know.
And I guess I just wanted to follow up by saying that, like, I think that we, David and I. Very much understand that, that with your blessing to move forward, that we're at the beginning of a process, not at the end of a process. And that there's a lot of work yet to do on the, on, as we get into the design of the architecture in more detail. But you know, as, as Yan said, and as I think the presentation illustrated. We have really tried to follow, to follow your lead. I think we're, I personally feel like we're in a, in a, in a good spot that, that could be massaged in, in, in really positive ways. But of course, at this point, we're, we're here to hear from, from all of you. So thank you.
Okay, so that concludes your presentation, I take it?
Yes, thank you much.
Thank you.
Okay, so what I would like to suggest is that, let's see what time it is. It is, we have a, if we stick to our existing schedule, we have 19 minutes to discuss this. So what I would like to do is I would like to give the board members. Two minutes apiece to. Make a statement or ask questions of the proponents here of this project. And because we're really, tonight is really packed and I appreciate you're looking for some direction tonight. I, hopefully we can get something moving, but we have really tight schedule. So why don't we start with, who's first on my window? Or does, so Yi Ching, are you, are you willing to start? So I will, I have a clock here and I'm going to be fairly strict about time, so please go ahead.
Great. Thank you so much for that presentation. I really appreciate the, the imagery and the explanation of how the process that you guys have gone through. I, I understand it, it has been a lot. And from what I understand of, of the PUD and you know, the, the. The process, I, I'm really hopeful for this project. I think that it's, it's. You know, you, you guys have done a fantastic job of following some of the guidelines that have been presented to you. I'm especially impressed with the six-story to the five-story transformation. I think that that transformation where the 50% went to, I can't remember, 30, 40% green space. It didn't feel like there was a real sense of loss of the green space. And it was, it was still well considered with the, with the figure and the, the, all the facades around it were really well considered. I think that the really strong city edge at Mount Vernon was, is, is the right place to be. Whereas the softer edge or along the water feels right. I'm concerned a little bit about, you know, the, the public versus the, the, you know, the facing, the, the, just the activity between the. Privatized lobby spaces and the residential amenities to the public open space. And then the Vernoff, that space, I, I like that it's going to become a new streetscape. And but however, it's very, very prominently back of house. You know, with the garage and stuff, so if, if that could become a more, you know, more comfortable space to, to walk and, and to, to sort of stroll. And it not be so, you know, back of the restaurant and smelling, you know, the garbage, that kind of stuff, that, that would be great. But I, I, I'm concerned about the units themselves. I think that we really need affordable housing in our town. And with, you know, with the widening of the, with the. And with, you know, with the widening of the with the footprint, and I I wonder about the quality of the spaces inside. I know you said 60, 50 to 60 feet as a as a double corridor, as an optimal space, but now it's becoming wider. So are the are the interiors of the unit is going to be, oh, got it, going to be a little bit lacking. And I'm concerned about that. And I'm also concerned about the cost of these each of these units. So if there is fewer parking spaces, that would be wonderful. I think that would be, we we don't have enough units like this that are for people who choose not to have cars or who cannot because of disability or because of old age. These kinds of housing things, I think that also without parking, it would keep the unit costs down and that would be very optimal. So I'm I'm very optimistic about this project. So thank you very much.
Great. And I thank you for being very pretty good on your time. I'm writing down questions, which I'll gather, and then we can direct it to these people, to the pro opponents at the end. Next on my screen is Sally. So please.
Thank you, Diab, and welcome to the 10 Converse Place team. I am very grateful for your interest in investing in our town. And I think that it is entirely possible to develop this site in a way that meets the strategic goals of our town, which I think you're all very familiar with, and complements the 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 look and feel of our community. To me, going to five stories is a really big building on this site. And I am extremely grateful that you've taken it from six to five. I think that the massing of the brick being four stories with one story of slate or copper at the top is contributing to its sense of massiveness and that having in a distinct articulation between the second and the third floor and the third and the fourth and the fourth and the fifth will allow it not to feel quite so much like, I don't know, a new Bedford Mill building. It's just these sheer walls are very looming. And I don't want to think of Mount Vernon Street as a city edge. It's a town edge. And so stepping back in that way will help with that very much. So there is a 25 foot buffer zone. And using that psychologically as part of your open space, even though you can't count that in your own calculations of open space means that the people will really, really appreciate everything. The residents of our town will appreciate everything that you do to clean up the waterfront and make it a public-private space. And then we would, of course, continue to be grateful for the fact that there's private money involved in maintaining that space. I do feel very strongly that the restaurant should not be on the northeast corner of the building facing Mount Vernon Street. That's the coldest, windiest, shadowiest spot. And it's not the vision of enlivening the mill pond waterfront that I am getting from a lot of people that I talk to, that of course, there needs to be a restaurant on the water. And there's outdoor seating and there's benches and there's lanterns and there's umbrellas. It's not tucked against the bridge and Mount Vernon Street. It's on that fabulous curve. And I know you've got some gym located at that spot right now. And I just don't think that putting a gym on the first floor of this building is going to do the most benefit for the future of this downtown. I just
Sally, Sally, if I could interrupt, you're you're at three minutes, so.
Yeah, I also want to say I'm grateful that you took the firewall chimneys off the top floor. And I want to say also that there are, in my view, a number of the recommendations of our town center design guidelines that in fact haven't been addressed. And that what I would very much favor is an opportunity to sit down with you and do a line by line review of every one of those requirements so that I understand how you think that what you've proposed does meet that objective and maybe we can find a meeting ground because right now I just don't think the building looks as good as it should.
Okay, thank you, Sally. Next, I guess. Heather, I know you're here somewhere, but you're not on my screen. Heather Hannan, if you could please. Are you? Are you there, Heather? Is Heather's mic off?
Her mic is on, but it looks like it's not working because, yeah, she's unmuted, but we're not, unfortunately.
Okay, that's no good. So Brian, if you could put up Cheryl's email and if you could, well, I, you can go ahead and read it and I'll try to contact Heather and let her know that her voice is not working.
Well, she if she can probably hear us, then I would say log out and log in again and and then connect audio through there. In the meantime, I'm going to bring up the questions that Cheryl had sent.
Right, so this is, I just want to say Cheryl Wolf is our newest board member. And while she wasn't able to be here this evening, she did send us some comments. So if you want to go ahead, Brian?
Sure. So it's really more of direct questions to to the team. So the fire station entrance on Mount Vernon Street will impact both commercial and residential use. How is the building program and design addressing the nature of this adjacency?
Oh, we can, we can, if there, can we just gather any comments that we can pull out of here? Because I want to keep all the questions.
No, 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 sorry. There are no comments here. These are all questions. These are all questions from Cheryl. So maybe these should be put to the end.
Okay, and do we have any any word from Heather?
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, go right ahead.
Go right ahead.
I'm back. Okay, so I don't have that much to say and I can make up for Sally's Sally's overage, maybe. I think my comments are similar to the last time we met, that my concerns had been about activation along the edge, like the number of doorways, basically, because it's the perimeter is very long and I I don't see that there's a lot more doors activating the edges. And then I think the top level is still looking a little bit funny, like very heavy on top of the building, like really bulky and kind of weighing it down. But otherwise, I think generally the urban design is still in the right direction. I think it'll be important for the public open space to be really great so that people feel like they got something when they traded, you know, for all the people who don't want to see massing that big on that site. I think if the park space is really great, that might make up for it for people.
And Heather, thank you. I just want, and just to clarify, the last time we met, we absolutely took note of your issue about activating the entrances, activating the base with more entrances. We haven't, we haven't gone back to the design yet to to sort of incorporate those thoughts, but I, so I didn't want you to think that we hadn't done that because we just haven't done it yet. So
Yeah, yeah, I just mean, I still have the same sort of thoughts.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I'm wondering if, Brian, did you get my chat about the PUD? You're looking it up.
No, I have it here. I'm going to put it in the chat right now.
Okay, so as you probably, well, we've spoken about this a lot in the past. I I I am, I believe that this site can take this density. I believe that the design, I like the design. I share E Ching's concern about the size of the units and how we can increase affordability. In particular, and I know this is a, this is a source of ambiguity and disagreement, that when you go for FAR three under the PUD and Brian has put it up in the the chat for us, because that's what we do these days. In order to get a 3.0, it clearly meets the goals and objectives of CBD by offering more diverse housing opportunities. And that, I think, is the key question, is how if we give you a 3.0, we expect something which is in excess, the way I read it, of what's presently required under the CBD zonings. Otherwise, why would you give you a three, why would you give you an extra FAR 3.0 if the town isn't getting back something special? Because as you can understand, acknowledge, a 3.0 is a very large increase over the buy right and even the special permits. So when we're negotiating as to what the town gets in 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 response to what you're getting in terms of the economic viability or your profit out of this extremely important site, what are we, what is the town getting in return in terms of that diversity of housing opportunities? And I recognize that this term is not well defined. And I believe that I hope that if this project proceeds, we can come to an understanding. And I've certainly, I've asked the Housing Partnership Board to provide their idea of what a more diversity would mean because they certainly are, you know, we're looking at housing and they're obviously a key part of that. So I think those are my statements and hopefully I made, I came in under two minutes. So what I'd like to do is to I believe E Ching had a question, but I'm afraid I wrote down. What was your question, E Ching? I'm sorry.
Oh, I don't really remember, but maybe it was the quality of the the units now that the, you know, the footprint has increased in size because, you know, they they will be deeper and so there will be less, you know, sunlight natural light because of the six to five floor change.
Right.
I was just gonna say, it's a good comment. I think that we we began, we had, we had started to study that and we felt fairly confident that we could make that work, but because of just the nature of the units, we wouldn't want to go deeper, but we we felt fairly confident that we could make that work. One of the things also about the width of the building was something I wanted to respond to Cheryl's questions, which are that we are, and this is important for Sally as well in terms of the apparent height of the building, is we are trying to locate the mechanicals in the fifth story roof line largely concealed, which is made possible in in part by the the dimension of the building.
Okay, I guess one of the, if I could follow on on E Ching's, and that is that if we do increase the number of units, if we, if if the number of units were increased, perhaps make them more affordable. No, I'm sorry. I'm trying to reconstruct E Ching's question and I apologize.
I think I I conflated
Worried about parking.
Of parking, but so kind of advocating maybe to the board to to recommend for fewer spots per unit because, you know, we do lack housing that that gives people the opportunity to not have cars or or, you know, not have to pay for cars. And I think, you know, uncoupling parking with units would bring the housing prices down and construction costs too. It just takes up less space. So I, I mean, I would, it's maybe a question for the board, like, could we, could we reduce parking requirements?
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I might just add, E Ching, I'm not sure you're aware, our actual requirement here and Brian can weigh in, is actually just 0.5 spaces per unit. So we're driven more by the element of market demand at this point than we are the actual size. Brian, that's right, isn't it? 0.5?
I believe it's 0.75.
I thought it was because you need to the train.
So, yeah, so that's something that you can apply for, but but the the base of the base zoning here is 0.75 with the opportunity to get down to 0.5 or even zero if the board wishes, but
Right. So we are, we are driven more by by the market demand than we are. The question of affordability keeps coming up. And shame on me for not having mentioned in the introduction that we do, of course, have the 15% affordable that the zoning requires. It's 10 of one, 5 of another, but it's essentially, it's 15%. So the units in this building with the cost of construction skyrocketing today, these units are going to cost to build somewhere around a million two to a million five. So the project with 15% affordable, currently it's designed as 46 units, which would imply seven affordable. So those affordable, and I see John's on the phone with us. We've worked a great deal with John Subiria on a number of issues. Those are to be sold somewhere around $250,000. So we lose a million to a million two on each affordable unit. So we are going into this at a cost of about seven to eight million dollars for the affordable today. So just as a baseline, yes, we have it. It's at 15% and those are the economics.
Okay, I wanted to go to Sally. I I believe you're, I don't want to summarize what you said. I want to ask if you have any questions you'd like to direct to them. Your mic is off, Sally.
Thank you. So the 46 units with seven affordable. That's all happening inside your FAR of 3.0, which is 77,000 square feet. And my question to you, especially since we're trying to maximize the affordability of the entire complex, frankly, to make it possible for a more diverse community of people of all ages to live in Winchester, making the building to an FAR of 2.5, keeping it to a stepping up, you know, sort of the wedding cake concept, although I don't like the reference, but as it says in the design guidelines, articulating each floor separately and bringing it down, or maybe the first two floors can be whatever, but making smaller apartments that have less parking that have, therefore, the opportunity for you to have your number of units goals met in a smaller building would balance out the need for open space, the need for affordable housing, the need for profit, the need to preserve the beauty of this really pivotal site in town. So I'm advocating for a lower FAR and smaller apartments, not necessarily fewer. And I would be very happy to agree with E Ching on being flexible on parking requirements for this structure.
So what can someone from the development team talk about the feasibility of moving to a smaller building with smaller units? I believe these are, these are condominiums, so it would also, I don't know, Sally, if you intended to change from condominiums to rental or were you just using?
I don't think it's, it's, I don't think it's certainly my place to advise the owners about how they would manage the development of this property in that regard. If you build a rental building, you're either committing to manage it or committing to find a rental management partner. It would certainly serve the interests of Winchester much better if this building were all rental because of the way the laws are configured for affordable housing credits in this in this in the Commonwealth.
Well, I think that first off, we would actually have to meet a minimum, I believe, of 25% for those laws to actually come in and these would be counted. So that may not be possible unless they're deciding to go to 25% affordable. But why don't we hear from the developer team whether a 2.5 FAR with smaller units is is something they would consider? Or what would, how would that change the project?
Yeah, I could take that one. The amount of units is actually not as relevant as a square footage. We we mainly count in square footage, you know, the cost to build per square foot and the costs and how much you can sell a square foot for. So smaller or bigger doesn't really change the dynamics much. On the contrary, if you have smaller units, normally, they tend to be more expensive per square foot. So you're actually making your problem maybe worse. They tend to be more expensive per square foot than the larger units. There is a very limited possibility to go down. The question was raised before, what is a town? And the question was raised before, what is a town getting back? Well, uh, we're getting rid of a very ugly building. Uh, that is extremely expensive because it is fully leased up. It's a great cash flowing asset. There's nothing wrong with that building. It can stand there for another hundred years. And be perfectly well. So uh, that is, just to take that down is a huge loss. I mean, the building alone is is valued, I think, at five and a half or six million dollar that we just completely get out of. Also, the wall nerve, the the site work, all of that is extremely expensive. And as maybe some of you guys know, if you want to build an architecturally gorgeous building with brick and details and and this and that. Again, that's extremely expensive. So instead of an ugly building on the underused side, you're gonna get a gorgeous building. Uh, with beautiful landscaping, a wall nerve, unaffordable housing, fifteen percent. Uh, and the cost for the parking, honestly, the cost is either you go underground or you stay above. Once you go underground, if you have ten spots or twenty or forty, it really doesn't change all that much. It's not a made it system. Uh, the cost, you can save a lot of money and probably get more affordability if you put the parking above ground. But I think the last thing you want on a site like this, if you don't like a gym on the first floor, which I absolutely agree, it should not be there. And in later iteration, that has been removed. If you don't want a gym there, you sure as hell do not want parking garage on the first floor looking over the water, right? So uh, it's in, absolutely, in my opinion, the town's best, best interest and our best interest to put that parking underground. But that's again, a huge cost. And the benefit for for Winchester is that you don't have a stupid wall of cars. Uh, looking over the water or looking over the street. So the benefits in in this particular, there's a trade off. Either we can go affordable, we can go much cheaper architecture. And put the the parking above ground, you can get a lot more affordable units in there. Or you want to go really high end gorgeous looking field underground parking, get rid of an ugly building, get rid of those ugly antennas. When your antennas alone is a hundred thousand dollar a year, you know, so I mean, it it it, there's, there's. A lot of trade offs here, and if you just solely focus on one, the affordability. I don't think this is the project to get a huge amount of affordable units there, that. That's not the kind of building this, the town would want on this prime location, you know? You don't want a vinyl clad square box, you know, with with some balconies. Um, with then twenty percent affordable. I don't think this is a site for it, but I mean, it's your town in the end, but uh.
Yeah, I I just want to point out that we have a uh. Accepted a proposal for the waterfield lot, which is. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, sixty percent affordable, which is definitely not vinyl clad siding. It's a gorgeous looking building. So it is possible. Um, so I just want to say that affordable does not require it look hideous.
Is that sixteen percent?
Six, zero.
Sixty six percent.
Sixty six percent.
Forty out of six, forty units out of sixty units.
Yeah, but I have to say, that that project is getting a lot of kick, you know, pushback and so.
Well, but the point is that. We reviewed, we we had five proposals. All of them came in at significantly higher levels than fifteen percent. Of affordability and all of those proposals were. Really well put together. So all I'm doing is pushing it back against the notion. That an affordable building has to look like a vinyl clad box because we had five examples where it did not. Um, but I want to, I I want to continue on to our, to our next member. Heather, did you have any questions you wanted to ask?
No.
Okay, um, so unfortunately, I think we are going to have to um, end this segment. Um, I hope that the development team has gotten some indication of where the board lies. I hope this gives you more clarification. Uh, I think that there are certainly some issues that we can discuss in terms of if. The four, if if the economics don't allow putting affordable units on this site. There are other ways that we can handle that in terms of um. Payments to the Affordable Housing Trust, things like that, which we could consider. Um, I think that um. I I will not summarize what the board has said because I'm not going to put words in their mouths. But I I think you know, you have an idea of of how to proceed. I hope you do.
Chairman, forgive me, I have no idea how to proceed. Do you, Jan, have an idea?
No, no, actually I don't, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't mean to be rude. We did, we have no idea. Well, affordable than fifteen percent on this site. Um, we're already seven million dollars, eight million dollars for affordable. We lose, how many million when we take the building down? Five million when we take the building.
At least.
Then we have a gorgeous building that is dated points out is extraordinarily expensive. So you guys have to make some choices. We'll keep the existing. We'll go to a box, we'll do parking at grade. And we'll do what we can within a, you know, a two point, two point five F A R, far more, far more profitable. And we can get it done. Uh, so Yan, I mean, help me out.
Pardon me for interrupting, but you just heard three of the four present board members say. That they are willing to continue looking at this design. And and yet that doesn't give you any indication of how the board is moving?
No, I heard one member say she wanted the design to be lower. I heard one member saying that they want more affordable. Um, no, we have no clarity. Um, this has been going on so long. Um, we we can leave it at that. I don't mean to be argumentative. But after this presentation, you can see where we have been now for a year and a half. And we come to a meeting and we still have nothing.
I I would disagree with that, but obviously you're the person who's looking for more clarity. I I don't know that you're going to get the board to say, yes, we agree with every part of this proposal at this stage. Um, I don't know, we we cannot say this is the proposal we will accept because. We, it's not officially before us and that would be. Improv, I I don't think that's appropriate for this board to say that. Um, I I don't know what are the reassurances you require. Given that we are talking about a proposal which is not. Which is in a pre, we're in a pre-application meeting.
So can we file? With what we have and work from there and refine what we have there? Which means you just, we we skate at the edges and we change on details here, a little bit of some doors here, tubes there. But the the basic idea is is a three point O F A R over five stories on the side.
You can certainly file it. Yeah, there's, I mean, you could have filed this last year except that you were uncertain about how, whether the board would approve it. As as one of your team has pointed out, because it does have an affordable component, you no longer need a super majority of the board, so. Your decision to file this permit is, yeah, you can go right ahead and do that.
Okay, that's good.
Um, so uh, the the point is, if you want further clarity from this board. I I think you underst, I mean, per, I thi, I thought you got a fairly clear. And perhaps the other board members would like to jump in because I don't want to hog the time. If if they think that there is, if how they feel about how the level of clarification that's been given tonight.
I I can jump in um, to say that I'm hearing loud and clear from our board that. They favor affordable housing, um, they favor open space. Um, and I'm not hearing a lot of emphasis on design. So I'm hearing myself being the sole voice saying, I would like very much for this building to. Or not the sole voice, because Heather, you have had some excellent design recommendations, including the number of doors and. The celebration of the moon earth. Um, and I again reiterate the need to move the restaurant to the water. Um, if you can work with the building look. To make it look like it fits in this town more than it does. Um, and there's a lot of really good language in our central business district design regulations. That I offer again to sit down and go a line by line review through your design and say. From my perspective, as not a majority voice, obviously. I don't think this design does it. I'm not saying we can't build on this site. It's a fabulous site. And it deserves a fabulous solution again, so let's keep working on it, but don't. Think that what you've got now is pretty close to done because. I don't feel that way. Maybe you don't need me to, but that's where we're at.
Uh, thank you. Anyone else want to comment?
Um, I just want to comment that I don't know that their design has to get any further before they decide to file. Like, we have seen a lot of iterations, a lot of different design, and we've given a lot of feedback. There's time after. They submit for us to talk more about that and hear from the community. I. I don't want you Sally to be giving them the message that they can't submit this. I mean, we have seen it several times.
Right.
Right, but Heather, the the issue is now it costs us several more hundred thousand dollars to take this to filing. Our last filing for six fifty four main was three hundred and twenty pages. Uh, we can do that, but that's a tremendous amount of money. If these are the headwinds that we're going to be facing. Again, I defer to Yan. But if these are the headwinds, you guys have to understand, there's no way in the world we're going to do that. That it just doesn't make sense. You're talking about.
In the world that you would do what, Ian? I'm sorry.
That we would file this project with you as it is. You, Sally, you don't want it. Uh, Diab wants more affordable, which we can't afford. We don't know if we can afford the building we have. Uh, the moon earth and all these things that you talk about again, what we're doing for the town. What we're doing for the town is proposing. A three point O building under a P U D, which is exactly precisely. What this board presented to the town meeting in two thousand fifteen. Which was the justification for the C B D district and for this board, not the Z B A. To become the permit granting authority. This board is not doing the permit granting authority piece of its job. And I'm sorry to be, you know, this is two thousand fifteen. This is exactly what was presented.
Uh, you know, I I I can understand your frustration, but again, uh, you know, I'm, you came into this. Asking for the maximum allowable under our zoning bylaws. And I'm really surprised that you didn't think there would be some pushback in terms of what extra you were providing to town. I understand that you have made a decision to go a very expensive route for a beautiful building. I don't dispute that. But I I think that. When you look at what you're getting, yes, the town is getting some very aesthetically pleasing. Things, but the town needs more than aesthetics. And so I, this, the question of what happens with affordability, as I mentioned, we can negotiate what that means. We can come to an understanding as to if you cannot do affordable units on site because they will cost you, oh, you know, some. Large fraction of one point four or five or six million, then we can certainly look at other options. There are certainly less expensive places in town to build affordable housing. So as I said before, I don't, I don't see, I don't see these headwinds that you claim are existent. You've got at least three board members who are interested and willing to go forward. You have one board member who I think has some, some concerns about design and height, which are not. Out of the ordinary for people in this town. Uh, uh, where are these headwinds?
Also, can I just add to that, Diab, that there are some cost saving. Opportunities in this project. I can think of two now. And I'm sure that you've tried to identify as many as you can and you've got them on the table as options. Um, one of them is that it is in the zoning bylaw that if there is offsite parking. Within a certain number of feet of the site, and I can't remember if it's, I think it's five hundred feet. That it is considered meeting a parking requirement. And I think that when I took my ruler to the sidewalk and the street distance to the land behind our public safety buildings. There is past studies that have looked at the feasibility of a parking garage on that location. In this scenario, if it truly is feasible, and I'm not certain that it is. This would be an opportunity for the town and you to do cost sharing on a. Project that would benefit the town in many, many ways. Um, and would possibly cost you less than creating a waterproof bathtub in a flood zone for parking. So that's one. And the other one that everybody loves, this is the curved brick face. But it's possible to celebrate the pond, celebrate the open space. Psychologically in increase the open space. Um, and take the money out of making a curved facade and put it into other forms of building articulation. That are more consonant with the architectural precedents that surround this site. So there's two right there, and and I'm not saying that they're. They're um, you know, a panacea. Um, but I think this. Sweet spot between a super fancy building and, you know, some. Denigrated vision of what affordable housing should look like. There's a sweet spot. It's not either or. It's not, I'm taking my marbles and leaving if you don't get me what I want. On either side. The town needs housing and the town needs this site to be beautiful. It needs it to add value to the town center. Um, it needs to bring in vitality and people and to Yicheng's and Diab's point. It's to bring in all kinds of people, not just people who can buy three million dollar condos. So I don't know, I'm rambling now, I'm sorry. I'm not opposed to this development. I want it to meet. All these goals in a balanced way. I'm not at all opposed.
Well, I think um, I think we have, we're going to have to leave it at that and I apologize, but we've done. Twenty minutes over and we do have, we're going to have to bump one of the things off of our agenda to complete this meeting on time tonight. So um, I hope that we can, you know, the funny thing is, Ian, is that I am really in. Favor of your proposal. So my pushback is because I don't understand your position. And I I really. Would like us to come to an understanding which allows this project to move forward. And I don't know how much more clarity you're going to get out of this board. Uh, you've hurt us all and I don't know how we proceed. I I, you know, I think you should go ahead and file it personally. Um, I understand there's a, there's a financial risk to you to do so. Um, but. I think that we have gone through what the pre-application meetings were designed to do. We have had very. Heated, but I think good discussions. Um, and at this point. It's, you're going to have to make that decision without, I think, any further input from the board because I don't know how much more input we can give you.
Well, we'd like to find, file something. The point of pre-application is to reach a common ground so that by the time we apply. I think, Brian, that was the original discussion and Diab, I can remember you at town meeting, if I'm not mistaken. Were particularly um, pleased that the planning board would be the um, permit granting authority because the C B A did not have. That authority and I think you spoke to that at town meeting in two thousand.
Do recall during so, yes.
Right, so we saw that and I think you saw that then when you proposed it to the town. You saw it as something so that by the time we get to filing a very expensive process detailed and. Ties up a whole bunch of time i- in in the town, in the engineering department everywhere else. Uh, by the time we get there, that we have a commonality of of theme. That it's, i- if, uh, you know, if it's not three point O, we have not been pushing three point O. I I would like to point out that as you saw through that review. It was the planning board and and Dennis. Who said, yeah, this is a great project, just do this, this and this. And so we kept doing that. Uh, at at huge cost and we don't want to keep going through that. So I would ask you if we could come back, if we, you know, I'm not sure what the redesigned Yan. You know, what do you want to do here?
I I would.
I I I think I'll listen to him. If he thinks we can file, we have input from everybody in the board now. We'll file and see what happens.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Very good. Yeah, and thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I really. You can call me Diab. Nobody calls me Mr. Juris. Um, so uh, thank you. I I appreciate the candidness of everyone's opinions. And, um, I, I, I hope we, we, I really do hope we see this being filed so that we can move forward. Uh, I think this is an enormously important step in revitalization of our downtown. And, uh, you know, this team has been, I think, a really great team to work with on the technical detail so far, as far as I'm concerned. That's my personal opinion. So, um, and so, uh, thank you all, and I think we're going to have to move on to the board's agenda.
Thank you all very much.
Have a wonderful evening.
We look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Bye. Okay, um, so we are now stuck at a point, folks, and I apologize for letting that go on longer, but I think it was important that we go through that. So we have two things left on our agenda. Uh, we have a master plan implementation committee discussion, and we have, um, a discussion of how or if the board responds to the referendum to, um, revisit or what's the correct way to do this, to undo town meetings' approval of the land development agreement for the waterfield lot. And both of those, I think, are extremely important. Um, one of them, I think, is more timely than the other in that the, the referendum actually will occur at the date of our next meeting. So if the board chooses to make a, to, to go one way or the other, I think we need to do that tonight. Um, and then unfortunately, we will have to reschedule the master plan implementation committee discussion. Um, how does the board feel about this?
Sorry to interrupt, but, uh, we still have to do two petitions that are even more-
Oh, my God.
So it's hate to be the bearer of bad news, but one's a revisit petition. I, I thought you were just going to hand it right over to me, and I was going to go right into nineteen Wedgemere.
My apologies, um, but-
That's a, yeah.
Why don't we, well, well, can we just ask the board if they want, if they wanted to postpone or reschedule our nine forty-five master plan implementation committee discussion? Just chime right in, folks.
Yes.
I'm sorry, have- Okay, I think Heather said yes.
Uh, yes, but I could also do it really quickly, too.
Okay, um, and Sally, I didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
I, um, I'm happy to postpone the master plan implementation committee discussion, and I do believe that as far as the, the comments that I have prepared for the two petitions, I can be brief.
Okay, well, why don't we do this? Why don't we do the Z B A petitions? We will do Article Six referendum discussion. And if a miracle happens and we can get to master plan, then we can hear E Ching's comments. I'm not, I'm not, okay, Brian, it's all yours.
Sure. Um, so petition thirty-nine forty, this is nineteen Wedgemere. This was before the board previously at our last meeting. We voted unfavorable action based upon the out-of-scale elements of the garage, as well as a negative effect on a historic resource, the historic resource being the house itself, as well as the streetscape. So the height of the garage was previously proposed at twenty-seven-seven. The current proposed height is now sixteen-two, which is more of a typically sized garage if it's going to be so close to the property line. I recommended favorable action with regards to this petition based upon the new, uh, the new, um, design, with the condition that the Winchester tree warden, that being the D P W director, um, be consulted, which I believe he already has been, to determine the mitigating conditions for the unauthorized removal of the town tree. Um, so I just kind of leave that up to the D P W director. Um, uh, and that's all I have. So back to you, Diab.
This nineteen-
Okay, um, uh, why don't we go through the, does anyone in this, on the board want to vote, um, against this? Um, I, for some, I'm sorry, I have to change my view. I see, I only see E Ching at the moment, so let me see if I can-
I, I would vote for favorable.
Okay, and then Sally?
I would vote for favorable, and I have questions that I feel strongly need to be answered.
Okay, and Heather?
Um, I think that it's better the way that it is, but I do want us to keep following up on what the consequences for cutting down a tree.
Okay, so there is a backstory on the tree cutting, which was not available to us last time. So Brian, do you want to quickly fill us in on that backstory?
Well, it's just basically, it's a little bit unclear in terms of if the applicant was not the person uh, who took those trees down, didn't pay the, the, um, didn't, didn't, didn't pay for those trees to be removed. It was a neighbor, um, so it's a little sensitive. So the idea is the tree warden is going to take, the tree warden is going to handle this situation. Uh, but it does not appear that the current applicant was really involved in the cutting down of those trees at the moment. Uh, more to come.
Okay. Does, does that answer your question, Heather?
Kind of.
Okay, well, why don't we quickly, um, so Sally, you had some concerns you wanted to talk about, so very quickly, please?
So quickly, my first concern is about setbacks. So we have a fifteen-foot setback side and rear in R D V ten, and they're proposing an outdoor kitchen and an outdoor wood burning fireplace, built right up to the property line. And those are structures, structures in our definitions of our zoning code, um, describe what those things are. And I don't understand what is the point of a fifteen-foot setback if you can put a kitchen right on your property line? So that's my first concern is, do these structures not comply with setback requirements? My second question, again, goes to the tree, and we just discussed it. But I want to say, but I do not want this act to be met with impunity. It is wrong to destroy a healthy, mature town shade tree, and there has to be consequences. If I'm hearing correctly, it wasn't the applicant who took the tree down. So now we have a little pouro to do, to figure out who took it down and find out who's responsible for, for defacing that particular portion of our public realm.
So I think that, um, this is now, I mean, the tree warden is, I believe, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the appropriate town entity to pursue that is certainly the tree warden's jurisdiction. So I don't know that, I, I completely agree with your statement, Sally. Um, I don't know where the, whether the-
It is not zoning. It is sure, in short, it is not zoning. It is not in the zoning bylaw. It's in the general bylaw.
That's right. I, I understand that we're stepping out of our, out of our trail or track or whatever they call it. But I cannot, as a citizen, sit here and think that, that people who cut down a mature shade tree on town property should be met with impunity. It's just-
Well, I, yeah, I agree, um, but that is, um-
It's outside of our purview, so-
Yeah, unfortunately.
Setback question for me, and then I can vote yes.
Yeah, so Brian, can you, can you provide more info on structures and setbacks? Re, whether or not a kitchen or something would meet that requirement?
So, um, I, I, yeah, I think it's unclear. I, I do not think that, uh, this, the, you know, what that, you know, what they have on the site plan within the setback in terms of a wood burning fireplace with a cooking element, whether that actually is considered a structure, that is something for the Z E O to, to determine. Um, I do not believe that these are called out specifically in the zoning bylaw. So I think maybe there's a potential gray area. But, um, I, I, at, at the moment, I do not see an issue with these items in, in the setback because it's not called out, but I'm not the authority here.
Okay, um, well, um-
The definition is something that is erected and fixed to the ground in a fixed location. I don't perceive this outdoor kitchen and this, also, there's no specification about how high they will be. And I have to say, just from a, just sheer out-of-the-box reaction, if I had a neighbor who put up a six or seven-story chimney right on my lot line, or two chimneys right on my lot line, that would feel wrong. Sorry, E Ching.
Can I remind everyone that we were trying to move through this thing quickly? Can I make a motion to, um, uh, for favorable action, um, with, I, I don't know the language, but to, to, um, talk about this setback of this structure, um, for the cooking element?
Okay, so I think the language we want is to, um-
Recommend, it would be something like recommend favorable action with further, further clarification on structures in the setback.
Okay.
I don't want to make this drag on, but I've been to a lot of people's houses where they have like a pizza oven chimney thing right on the edge of their property. That's like-
That's not for us to decide, right?
Right. I'm just saying-
Z B A, check it out. We're, we're moving on.
Maybe we should move after I get off the-
Okay, so, so let's, let's get this down correctly. Um, so the, the, the motion is to recommend favorable action on petition three-nine-four-oh, nineteen Wedgemere, um, with a comment that the planning board, um, is, um-
Concerned about structures in the setback.
Would like clar, would, yeah, was concerned about structures within the setback.
It's still move.
Well, and, and I, I would-
And that was, and we had a, that was moved by E Ching?
Yes.
And seconded by Heather Hanon? And, uh, Sally, really quickly?
I just want the language of the, of the motion to say dependent upon confirmation that such structures are permitted in the setback.
If it's a structure and it's, I, I think the question is whether-
Considered a structure, yeah, it's whether it's considered a structure or not. Yeah, correct.
That's all, the only question is, is it a construction or not? If it's a structure, then it's not permitted. If it is a structure, whatever.
Right, right, right.
Okay, um, roll call vote, please. Uh, Sally Dale, please.
Aye.
Uh, E Ching Scott, please.
Aye.
Heather Hanon, please.
Aye.
Uh, Jarius, I, four-zero in favor with the one comment. Now let's move on to the next one, please, Brian.
I will go really quick. I just want to make a quick note that, uh, someone does have their hand up. I'm not sure what that's related to, if it's related to this petition, but-
I, I, we unfortunately have made a vote and we don't have time, so.
Oh, I just wanted, this is Caroline Sacks speaking. I just-
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Sacks. Um, I really, we, we have zero time for this. I'm sorry. We voted and-
It's not regarding the vote. It was just a clarification regarding the tree, which is that as the adjacent property, we had nothing to do with the tree removal, and they've confirmed that with the owner. So I just wanted to make that clear, as there are several neighbors on this call.
Okay, well, that's fine. That's again, as, as Sally Dale said, we're doing some pouroing then, I guess. So, um, I appreciate that. Um, so let's, um, we need to move on to three-nine-four-two-ninety-six Cambridge, please, Brian.
Sure, yeah. So, uh, petitioner seeking an appeal uh, under, um, from the Winchester zoning bylaw from a, uh, a permit to the, that the building commissioner slash zoning enforcement officer, that, um, they denied a building permit to install a wider garage door at this location at ninety-six Cambridge Street. So they're appealing that decision by the zoning enforcement officer. In addition to that, the petitioner is also seeking a variance in order to, to, to perform that, um, meaning to be permitted to widen that existing garage from twelve feet to eighteen feet to allow for the storage of major recreational equipment. Um, so I, my opinion is that Z E O did act appropriately in denying this building permit. Uh, the bylaw contemplates a maximum of three automobiles allowed in a garage and also requires recreational equipment to be stored in a building or in the rear yard. Um, I understand that placing the vehicles, um, I, I understand that placing the vehicles in the rear yard is, is, is certainly difficult, and the variance application talks about this, about, um, the, the shape and topography of the lot. Um, but the issue here has less to do with the lot and more to do with the fact that there's already space for three, three vehicles. Whether or not three vehicles are stored in there, it doesn't really matter. It's that, that this would make the space for a fourth vehicle. So there's, there's some, there's little, there's some, it's a little unique about this lot when compared to all the other lots in the zone that would necessitate space for a fourth vehicle, or in this particular case, two recreational vehicles and trailers. But no matter what's stored in these areas, area, what is proposed is a garage for more than three automobiles. So which is why this was denied in the first place. So because of that, I recommend an unfavorable action with regards to this variance application and make no comment about the appeal.
Um, okay, um, I am having unstable internet, but I caught most of what you said, Brian. Um, and I read your, your, your planner's notes. Um, so is there someone who, um, has a difference opinion with that, um, analysis? Or show, or is everyone, uh?
I, I have a clarifying question, Brian. What is the chapter and section of the zoning bylaw that they are needing to have an exception to? Is it, is it in the, like, I'm looking at five-one-eight parking of larger motor vehicles?
No, it's, so it's, um, in, in here, it's section three, group six, um, in the uses. And it says it's for vehicle, for personal vehicles on no more than, no more than three personal vehicles with all maximum of one being commercial. So it actually doesn't matter what you put in there. It's that it's making a garage that would be suitable for that many vehicles, meaning you can't have a garage for four vehicles if all your, even if you're putting in, it doesn't matter what you're putting in there, is that, is my point, meaning, so, so, yeah. They're, they're saying that they should be able to put it in there because it's actually not a car that they're putting in there. It's, it's a recreational vehicle, and there's still only three vehicles in there. But the idea is that the space, uh, should be allotted for the at most three vehicles, so. Yes, E Ching?
I, I would say, um, I would, I would recommend unfavorable action, but, um, mostly because it's, it's a reading of, the space has already been made. They're not adding additional spaces, adding a door so that the facade reads as, right now, as three garage spaces, but they're changing it to read as if there are four garage spaces. And it's unfortunate that these four spaces are at two different spots. And so it's just, it's just a confusing facade, and it's, you know, but it's on a street that very few people are going to be walking by and looking at. Um, I guess, I, I mean, I, I get, it's a thing of convenience for them, but it's, it, I know, I feel like the spirit of the law was to just say it should look like three, and now it's like four.
Oh, I see.
Okay.
Exactly.
Uh, Heather, did you, or Sally, did you, were you, did you express an opinion which way you were going to vote?
Well, I understand E Ching's, um, comment that she's right, because the house has two garage entrances and-
Yeah, excuse me. I just want to find out if someone is not going, is, is going to vote opposite from Brian's, um, recommendation. And then if no one is, then we can move directly to a motion. Okay, everyone is frozen on my screen. Like, Sally, I can't, oh, you are, I-
I, I wasn't moving because I was thinking.
Oh, okay.
I was originally thinking I would be in favor of this change because I didn't realize about the, because I couldn't find it in our code about the prohibition of not having four garage spaces. Um, and so to E Ching's point, Cambridge Street is a busy road. Um, you know, I don't know, it's not written in the code that depending on, you know, what kind of a road you live on, you can have more garage spaces or less. So sticking to the code, it's, it's a no, they can't do it.
Okay, so, um, Heather, did you have a? Did we lose Heather?
You have this look over here and see what they're talking about? E Ching making it look like there's just-
Well, it looks like someone doesn't have their mute on.
Right, but did we, did we lose Heather?
Heather is here. But again, maybe her, maybe that has frozen, but-
So, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Oh, um, yeah, I don't think they can have four garage doors, especially facing the street.
Okay, so, um, I, I'm also, I, I, I think that by adding the extra door, they make it permissible, they're, they make it a possibility of adding a fourth automobile, which I think it goes against what is in the zoning, so that's the way I vote. Is there a motion? Do we need to discuss this further? Um, is anyone willing to make a motion? One way or the other on this? Since we haven't revised the rules, I can't make a motion.
Yeah, the, the motion is to, um, for unfavorable action.
Okay, so this is unfavorable act?
There would be unfavorable action with, with regards to the var- There would be unfavorable action with, with regards to the variance. There's also an appeal, whether you choose to make in a right, anything on appeal, you would do that. Typically, we are silent, but there's no rules there.
Right. Well, why don't we just talk about the variance?
Sorry, Heather, Heather did make a motion for, for unfavorable action regarding the variance.
Right. Um, is there a second on that?
Yes, I second it.
Okay, Yiching, a second. Roll call vote. Sally Dale, please.
So an I vote is to say no to a four car garage?
Yes.
Aye.
Okay, uh, Yiching Scott, please.
Aye.
Uh, Heather Hanon, please.
Aye.
And Jerius, aye. So we are at four zero uh, in disfavor of the garage. Do we want to express an opinion on the appeal?
I think I need clarification.
Well, they're essentially asking, they're saying the build, the, the ZEO acted inappropriately in denying the building permit.
And what's the basis for that claim?
Um, we can, um, I can, I can bring it up, but there, there's a whole, there's a whole basis that's really kind of on, more on the variance, um, in terms of whether or not that they were wrong. I would, I would ask the applicant. I, I mean, in terms of why the, the zoning enforcement officer was wrong, I would, I would ask the applicant in terms of why they think that they were wrong.
Well, was he, was he in compliance with the group six accessory uses, paragraph three? When he denied the request?
Well, he was denied the request because it says this would create a fourth, this would create a fourth garage. So he did, so he denied it. That, that, so then, then they're repealing that denial uh, as well as applying for a variance to get it. So it's kind of a weird situation. We're saying that not only were you wrong, but even if you were right, I, I want to apply, I want to apply for a variance. So, so kind of a weird.
I, I personally, I personally don't feel the need to make a comment on the appeal.
No.
So do we have to make a motion for that, to not make it?
Nope, we can just
move on.
completely ignore it.
I agree, we can move on.
Okay, excellent. So we are done with the ZBAs? Okay, we are now at twenty two seventeen.
This takes us to article six.
Yes, jump right into article six. So, um, for those in the, in, in the peanut gallery out there in Winchester, um, you know, I forgot to tell everyone we were being recorded. Huh, well, two hours later, folks would be recorded. I apologize. So the question is, um, so a group of citizens has um, filed and received the correct number of signatures to put a uh, question before town as to whether or not the select board should follow, should have the um, authorization to follow with, through with the land development agreement with Civico on the Waterfield lot as approved by town meeting in this past spring town meeting. Uh, the, the article, the uh, the question before the voters is a yes vote authorizes the select board to continue with the ex, the land development agreement, which was authorized by town meeting. A no vote would um, essentially not allow the select board to go forward with that, leaving the project in some sort of legal limbo. So this board has been a strong proponent and spent an awful lot of time going over the proposals for that lot. Uh, the development of that lot is part of the center business district. Um, we have long viewed this lot as an important source of housing and I think, and we've also repeatedly made statements as to the need for affordable housing in the center business district as well as elsewhere in town. So the board can choose not to make a statement. The board can choose to make a statement. And I will open the floor.
I have a clarifying question, which is probably dumb, but why are voters voting on this?
The state government allows for a, a local petition to override actions of town meeting. I think it's an inherently good part of our government because it allows, you know, if, if, if if residents don't like what town meeting has done, this is the recourse they have um, to jump in other than waiting to fire everyone at the next election. So.
So, but my question is, is it going to the voters as a normal thing?
It's, there will be a special election on June twenty second.
No, I know, but.
Oh, okay, I don't understand your question.
Was it always going to go to voters?
No.
No.
Okay, that's what I didn't understand, because there's no language when you get the thing in the mail. It doesn't explain why.
Right. No.
Yeah, so this is, it's a special, it's a, yeah, it's a special election. That's what this is, this is called a special election. It's taking place, you know, like you said, June twenty second, and it's simply due to the fact that a, is it three percent, do you have, I think, three percent of the electorate to sign the petition in order to get it on the ballot to be a townwide vote. So that's what happened.
I think if we do make a statement um, on our position on this referendum that we should specifically address the reasons that the people who wish to overturn this vote um, wish to do so, which is, as far as I understand, it's because they do not believe that the town, its volunteers and its staff have done due diligence on, on making sure that we're getting the best deal out of this land. Um, and then perhaps incidental to that, or maybe in addition, I'm not sure, they are saying, why the heck are we doing this for ninety nine years? And so it's the length of the term and it's whether due diligence was done. I am under the impression that due diligence was extremely well done and that a ninety nine year land lease is somewhat of a convention in the world of land use and real estate, and I defer to others on that subject.
Um, I think we agree with you. That's not the issue.
Yeah, the, there is one clarification and the proponents of having it, um, the proponents of the no vote wrote an op ed in last week's Winchester Star in which um, John Miller is quoted as asking whether or not using this for the stated purpose was the best use for the town and that if, if it were, um, if there were another type of development on that lot, that it would bring in um, significantly more revenue to the town. So I believe that it's not just the question you brought up, Sally, which I think really is a lot on people's minds, is whether or not the town was taken to the cleaners by a savvy developer. But it's also a question of whether people believe that putting affordable housing on this lot, which would certainly not return the greatest amount of money, is an appropriate use for this lot. And I don't have, there's a quote from, um, from John Miller in that op ed where I believe he said something very similar to that. I don't have it in front of me.
I think it's obvious that the people who are against it are just against affordable housing because when we have these other big projects that aren't, don't have as much affordable housing, people are against. Well, now I'm getting tied up in what I was trying to say.
I.
You're hitting, you, you were hitting on the point that no one talked about anything related to school age children or any of these other craziness, uh, when it was all these other projects. So it's, it's, it's only when we're talking about affordable housing do all of these other kind of things get involved.
Right. And I also think the town is on a really strict timeline in terms of compliance with our commitment as, as a community and a commonwealth to carry our share of affordable housing in our town. And this is right next to the train station. And if there's one thing that people who can't afford a lot of rent also can't afford, it's a car. It's a great place to put affordable housing.
So I, I'm finding that a lot of these arguments that the proponents of this are putting forth are kind of shifting. And there, there are arguments that sort of you could try to aim at, but then they would just continue to land on for other things. So like that twenty five percent of um, it was proposed, it was going to be twenty five percent affordable, now it's sixty six percent. And so like, that's not a great deal. But I wonder if, if we make a statement that instead of like trying to address all these little tiny things about, you know, if it's the best deal, if there was due diligence, more of a more positive stance of why we think this is the best and most appropriate use of the land, why physically and metaphorically in the heart of town, we should be embracing this kind of development, you know, like rather than trying to meet them at these, all these little darts um, to be like, no, this is how we want to care for our community and this has been, you know, this is the best and greatest use. Um, and this is what the priority of our town have, you know, should be and how great that it's physically in, in the heart of town.
Right, because if they were, if they were on board with that, they wouldn't be making up all these reasons.
No.
I think that along with that, Yiching, I think there are um, other groups which are making the um, arguments about due diligence and whether we got the best deal. And that we have to speak from the planning board's strengths, which is our vision for this community, what the master plan says and where we want to be in thirty years or fifty years. What sort of a building do we want to have on that lot ninety nine years from now? If we don't plan that far ahead, thank God, goodness, but you know, the idea is that we have a very unique perspective. And I think our strength is coming from expressing our opinions from that perspective and leaving all of the monetary and all the other reasons. There are other groups which have a, a lot more knowledge about what the finances of these projects are and all of that. And I think they will be doing a very good job of advocating that. So I, just to um, to kind of get us to bed quickly, since I'm setting off on a long drive tomorrow morning, I would like to do that. I get the feeling from the board, the board is willing to make a public statement in support of the vote yes on article six position, which would retain the vote of town meeting authorizing the select board to enter in the land development agreement with Civico on the Waterfield lot. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so uh, just for the record, uh, everyone on the board has nodded or said yes in Zoom. So the only question is, so that's four zero and uh, unfortunately Cheryl is not here with us to add her voice one way or the other. Um, so then the only question is, it's a big one, what do we say? And Yiching, you, I think you started off with a great, great beginning. So if you can remember what you said.
Oh. Verbally, um, I would have to edit it out and like write it out. Is that, is that legal in open meeting stuff? But um.
It certainly is legal and you could actually, I mean, you could authorize me, I don't know how this would work. You could authorize me to summarize the statements that the board has made. And I can go back and review this video, which I will do tomorrow or maybe Thursday.
You guys, what if the two of you are a subcommittee and you write it?
Okay, uh, I think that's perfectly legal. So Yiching, if you, if, if the board will vote, um, I know that there are other groups waiting for the board to say something. If only that we say we are approved for vote on yes, I think that's great. Um, why don't I, why don't I do this? Um, why don't we have two votes? One is a motion to express our support for the vote on yes. The vote yes on article six position. And then the other motion would be to authorize Yiching and myself to come up with a statement uh, which I, which we will release is, so why don't we do the first motion first?
Okay, I make a motion.
So moved. Okay, the motion is that the planning board is in favor of the vote yes on article six position which retains the vote of town meeting to authorize the select board to enter into a land disposition agreement with land development? Thank you. I'm just writing LDA, LDA with Civico for the Waterfield lot. Okay. So that is the motion. And uh, what is the second, who's, so Yiching moved and then who seconded it?
I can second.
Uh, was that you, Sally? Okay, thank you. So we have Sally as a second and roll call vote, please. Let me go in reverse screen order. Heather Hanon, please.
Aye.
Okay, uh, Sally Dale, please.
Aye.
Yiching Scott, please.
Aye.
And Jerius, aye. We have four zero with one absent. And then the next motion is to authorize Yiching Scott and dear Jerius to um, write a, what are we calling this? A position? A statement, thank you. Of, of support for the vote yes on article six position. Okay, someone want to make that motion?
So moved.
Okay, Sally has made that motion. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Heather Hanon has seconded it. And roll call vote. Um, everyone's moved on my screen, so. Yiching Scott.
Aye.
Okay, Sally Dale.
Aye.
And Heather Hanon.
Aye.
Jerius, aye, that is, I keep doing a tally. I don't know why, since there are only four of us here. So that is four zero absent. So thank you all very much. We have one final question and we can all go to bed. Back to whether or not we should reschedule our meeting on June the twenty second. We typically do not meet on election nights. I don't know that, I, I feel no qualms about meeting on June the twenty second unless, um, I believe, I forget when the polls are open. Oh, darn. Eight to, eight to seven.
It's, I think it's seven to eight?
Oh, it's maybe a seven, eight, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so the only question I have is, does the board care? And if the board does care, should we meet later so that everyone can get to the polls on time?
I don't care.
I don't care.
I don't care, but I um, ask that we move some of these priority things, like the um, the committee, the information committee, as well as our priorities to the top of the meeting.
I, I am so with you on that one, Yiching.
I am too, Yiching.
Okay, so Brian's going to tell us we can't.
No, 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 I was gonna, um, no, that's, that's fine.
Sorry.
And it was the question, the, um, yeah, um, the question was just going to be, are we starting normal time? Are we starting at eight o'clock? Are we starting normal time, seven thirty? Um, if the polls, polls are still open, but anyone who's going to be voting, most likely will have voted already. Is that done?
Okay, I think, I think we're all going to do normal time.
All right, so seven thirty regular meeting is the next time we'll meet, June twenty second.
Excellent. Thank you all very much. Um, once again, we don't have enough time in the planning board meeting to get everything done, but I appreciate your helping me get as close to time as possible. Okay, anyway, have a great, oh, we have to actually close the meeting, don't we?
And we adjourn. Yes.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I do.
Yeah, Heather and me.
Okay, excellent. Roll call vote, uh, random this time. Sally Dale.
Aye.
Uh, Heather Hanon.
Aye.
Yiching Scott.
Aye.
Jerius, aye, four zero. Um, thank you very much, WinCam. Thank you very much, Nancy, who is our recording secretary. Thank you Winchester for hopefully holding on to us and who have kept on from the North Main Street meeting. Thank you very much for doing so. Uh, thank you, Brian. Let's all go to bed. Bye.
Bye.
Bye.